Will the aldermen please take their seats? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 2016-2017 Board of Aldermen Budget Deliverations. Today is April 27, 2016, and today we are here for the departmental presentation portion of the automatic budget process. But before we begin, will everyone please rise so we can salute our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Anderson?
President.
Alderman Beatty? Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer?
Madam Secretary, Alderman Beer is excused.
Thank you. Alderman Casey?
Here.
Alderman Gorman? Alderman Ginatasio?
Here.
Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant? Alderman Hardeman? Alderman Shaw? Alderman Smith? Alderman Becarelli? Alderman Vitro?
Here.
Alderman Vitale?
Here.
Thirteen present, Mr. Chairman.
Thirteen present, we do have a quorum. I'd like to thank all the aldermen for getting here on time. We'd like to get this budget deliberation started as early as possible. Thank you for your indulgence. At this point, the first departmental organization on our agenda is account number 4116, MGAT, page 16, moved from April 14. Do we have anyone here representing MGAT? I guess not. So we just move, we just move on this. Moving right along, we're going to move under the account number 4817, Human Services Department, page 90. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening.
You can present your department anytime you feel comfortable.
Absolutely. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Kristy Roach. I'm the interim director of the Department of Human Services and Youth and Family Services. Here with me tonight is Beth Simpson, our administrative assistant and bookkeeper. And I'd first like to start out by thanking you all for your continued support and highlight that our department has adhered to the mayor's request to maintain our budget. We've handed out some information for you here tonight, and while I believe many of you may be familiar with our services, I'd like to take a moment to speak to them. Currently, we have six full-time positions: executive director, clinical coordinator, program coordinator, two outreach clinicians, and an administrative assistant. I'm currently functioning in two roles as interim director and program coordinator. And in addition to our full-time staff, we have six seasonal temp employees, ten unpaid graduate-level interns, and two unpaid undergraduate interns. Our department provides a host of social service programs to Milford residents, and our overarching priority is to locate the appropriate resources and attempt to cost-share with other entities whenever appropriate while avoiding duplication of services. Furthermore, we're continually looking for grant opportunities to meet this end. On the human services side of the department, we have our flagship programs: energy assistance, rental rebate, and seasonal giving holiday programs. Each are in addition to our year-round general outreach services that are aimed at assisting Milford residents subsidize the cost of daily living. On the youth and family services side, we're a team of marriage and family therapists providing individual, family, and group therapy within the community. We also have a strong focus on prevention-based programs and crisis mobilization when necessary. Much of what we do at the Department of Human Services and Youth and Family Services would not be possible without our strong partnerships and community collaborations that our staff has formed over the years. There is a more comprehensive list of services that we provide located in your packet on the sheet labeled "Program Operations," so you can go over those at your leisure. And our face page, that first sheet in your packet, covers our operating budget, which includes our city grant as well as grants from other sources. The grants, therapy revenues, and private donations are all subject to change and contingent upon funding. Lastly, the section that I'll direct your attention to at this time is labeled "Direct Funds Distributed to Milford Residents" on that face page. In the 2014-2015 year, our staff processed 759 energy assistance applications, which awarded $344,630 to Milford residents, and completed another 442 rentals rebate applications, which awarded $245,321 back to Milford residents. When combined with other grants and private donations, our staff helped allocate just over $600,000 in funds for residents of Milford. Thank you for your consideration, and I'd gladly entertain any questions that you may have for me at this time.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Good evening, Kristy. I think you're doing a tremendous job as an interim, so I congratulate you for that and all your employee and your people with you, your team.
Thank you.
Just a fast question. The youth network grant of $8,000, is that from the city or is that another grant from another?
It is from the city, and we split that with the YMCA for the Youth Service Commission.
Good, thank you.
I would also like to thank you and your staff for the fantastic work that you all do for the City of Milford and all the residents. I see you all the time. I used to be liaison to that department, and I don't want to say it in front of the city clerk, because she worked very hard yesterday with the primary, but other than that, you guys are the hardest workers in the city. Thank you so much for all the work you do for the city.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Alderman Shaw?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for this breakdown. So, very little, and I think I was unaware of this, which makes your efforts that much more poignant, you only get from the state, State Department of Education, you get a stipend as well as social services? That's your state, that's the bulk of your state funding?
Correct.
And is that being cut in any way, or is it stayed steady?
It's always, it's always on the chopping block. So, right now, it's as stands. That's what we've got for this past, this past year, and it's always on the line. Our enhancement grant has been cut, our SE grant has lessened here, but...
Just to ask you if I can follow up, what is that doing to your programs, if anything? How are you managing? Because, you know, we're giving you about the same.
I think we're being creative, and we do have a staff of interns that we're able to utilize, so we're able to maintain, and I think we're always meeting whatever the needs are of the residents here in town.
Thank you for that clarification, and good luck. Thank you again.
Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Good evening. My question is directed towards the people that may not receive the services. Can you maybe elaborate on what case scenario would be if someone was to reach out to you for, say, fuel aid, or you mentioned help with rent? Is there situations where people, where you're not able to help those people?
So, overall, there are state guidelines for like the energy assistance program and any state-funded program that we run. The number-one thing that we're looking at is to make sure that there's sustainability across the board. So, we want to make sure if we're helping these families, it's going to be a lasting change, and it's going to be the thing that really gets them to springboard to the next step. So, there may be residents, but truly anybody that comes in and meets criteria, we're able to, if not help directly on our own, direct them to a resource that they may be able to reach funds from.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, have you ever run across people that are fraudulent in their application and not being upfront as far as what their situation truly is? They're trying to take advantage of a service?
By and far, that's such a small portion of who we see, and because there do need, there does need to be income verification and guidelines, and people need to provide asset statements and bank statements, payroll stubs, things of that nature, there are these fail safes in place that do prevent fraud along the way.
Thank you for your explanation.
Alderman Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman, thank you. Kristy, this is directed for you, and thank you for your efforts. Can you clarify that? How much unmet need is there with that energy assistance program? If, you have the numbers, thank you, so it's clear, but you said you had 400 applications for, is that correct? For the renters rebate, the two of them, the energy assistance and the renters rebate? 400 applications, and how many wound up receiving aid? Did you say that?
So, I'm sorry. For energy assistance, there were 759 applications that we took in that 14, 15 year, and I believe 76% of them met the qualifications.
And then for the renters rebate?
For renters rebate, I don't have that breakdown.
Oh, okay.
I think almost all of them, just because they do need to be in senior housing and disabled, and we do go out to the housing sites here in town, so I would say it was nearly all of them.
Good, thank you.
Alderman Becarelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Can I ask you, what is your total operating budget?
So, we get the grant from the city, it was a 490, and then we supplement that with our applications to SDE, we have funding from TEAM and DSS, so that puts us at the 5,000, I'm sorry, $559,000 that you see on that cover sheet right there.
Okay. The money that you give back to the Milford residents for the energy assistance and the renters rebate programs, is that monies that you've gotten from the federal and state programs?
Those are monies that are directly awarded. So, we're an intake site for TEAM, it's state money, it doesn't come through our office. Once they've met the criteria, they receive the benefit direct from the state or the government.
Okay, because I'm looking, and it's like the monies that you would give out is more than your total operating expenses. So, the idea is that the monies that you're distributing to the Milford residents, basically that's state and federal money, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
With the exception of private donations and things like that that we secure through Milford residents, but yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Casey?
Thank you, through you. I know that there's, keep Milford warm, does your agency work with them at all? They also provide, I guess, heat assistance, does your agency work with them?
So, from time to time, and I think that goes to the question that you had asked Alderman Ginatasio, when they, when residents may not meet the energy assistance criteria, we are working with other entities in the community, whether that is Quantis, keeping Milford Warm, Salvation Army, United Way, to also help meet that need.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Kristy, I know there's a question on the board, and it almost sounds like you expend more than you take in or whatever, but can you tell us the role that the United Way plays with you, and you work in synergy with the United Way as far as fuel assistance, et cetera?
So, our two full-time outreach clinicians are really assessing the need that the residents have when they come in through our office, and we do access United Way funding for emergency, emergency needs, so whether that's shut-off for utilities or things that may be more atypical, that don't necessarily meet the criteria of our flagship program, so damage to the home, hot water heaters, furnace repairs, things along that lines, we are absolutely accessing the United Way.
So, acting in concert with United Way provides more money for more people in Milford to do and help them out?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
Any more questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Once again, for all the work that you do for the city, and thank you for your great presentation as well.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Next on our agenda would be account number 4215, Management Information Systems, MIS, page 39.
Good evening. My name is Jean Lozak, I'm the MIS coordinator here for the City of Milford. For those of you who don't know me or my department, as the MIS department, we support all areas of technology for the city. We obviously cover the PC, the network, the various components of those systems, the applications, our end-users, but we also do phones, we also do GIS, we also produce the payroll for the city, among other things. It's been an interesting road the last 18 years that I've worked for the city. When I started in 1997, we had about 50 computers. We are exceeding over 500 at this point without any increase in IT staff to support them. That's been a real challenge, just to point that out. But with the, we try to streamline as much as we can, we try, our end-users are exceptionally patient and work with us in most of the cases. But it's, it is a challenge, and it's getting much more complicated as time goes on. Technology changes almost daily, as you, I'm sure you're aware, in your businesses, wherever you may work, I'm sure you see that on a day-to-day basis as well. But that's us in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any other questions about me or my department and my budget.
Alderman Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the Director. You had requested quite a bit more than you received or the mayor recommended. Can you explain the difference in what you would have used that money for?
The one line item that you probably see and note is the computer hardware line item. It's out of the capital outlays for $72,500. This was going to be our seed money to look into virtualizing our network. We've requested, we've discussed this in other budget hearings in the past and over the years, and now it's coming to the point where we really need to start virtualizing our servers. And we requested in a big, a large project in 2013, we requested a similar fund, which was cut from the project account at that time. So, we are looking to take, to move forward on that particular project.
Excuse me, can I just ask what virtualizing your servers means?
Virtualization is, basically, you're taking, as, on a very small scale, instead of multiple physical pieces of equipment, servers, to do various applications, various jobs, you're taking one large server, for instance, and dividing it up into multiple virtual spaces, and each of those virtual spaces acts like its own server. And it allows you to work, very simply, off of that one piece of hardware versus multiple pieces of hardware. It's very efficient. There are things, there's some pros and cons with that environment, but it is not a new technology, this has been done for decades in various forms, it's just getting much more sophisticated in its, in the things that it can do. But virtualization is the way to go in a, in a large enterprise, which is what we are at this time. Does that help? Okay.
Alderman Becarelli?
In your account number 4796000, the software and maintenance, it's 226,000, would that account, is it, is it going to be lowered if you were to be able to virtualize?
No, no. What, virtualization basically is more of a productivity where you're sharing resources, you're getting more throughput, but you still have an obligation to the software vendors for licensing. They still want their license fees, and they still have, we still have to pay them for their support, so that won't change.
Okay. Would there be cost savings anywhere in your department? For example, if you virtualize, let's say, 20, 30 servers, would you still need those 20 or 30 servers for redundancy, or would you then be, would that be a savings for us?
We don't have that many servers, so we wouldn't see as much of, if you were talking about 20 or 30 servers, I would say yes, we would see a savings there, because we would be able to spread the, the resources of the virtualization across the board, across all those virtualized servers. But since we're only talking about 10 or 12 servers, we wouldn't get as much of a return on the investment in that case. It depends, we have to look at it. We are outsourcing, we have, over the last two or three years, gone to cloud-based or host-based services. For instance, we've moved, years ago, we went to a hosted services for the library, that was many years ago. The permitting system is hosted to some degree, we still have some components of that running locally, and now we have, we've gone offline to a hosted solution to, for the health department nurses program. That was last year, so, or, yeah, we just had our first full year back in July, so it's going on two years now. So, we have, between the two scenarios, I don't think we'll see a huge savings, the savings will come into not having to support, it's more of the soft costs, where the IT department, my department, has less physical hardware and operating systems to support. That, it's really those soft costs that we're going to save on.
Is it virtualizations of the desktops, the users, or the servers?
The servers, the servers. The desktops, we're, we would look at, at a second, at a second point. But right now, our concerns are with the servers. We're not maintaining our servers well enough, and I think that we will do a better job in a virtualized environment.
Well, what I can't, what I don't understand is that the, the importance for your department in virtualizing, and yet the mayor and the finance board have both zeroed that out, and I understand what it is that you're trying to do and the importance of it, and also, you know, the 50 to 500 computers, you know, stretching, you know, your resources to the limit, but why is it, why do you think you haven't been able to convince either, you know, the mayor or the finance board? Because, you know, I believe that this is something that we should be doing, at least moving forward in your department, because it would be the right way to go, but why, why are we not getting any support? Do you have any idea why?
Mr. Chair, through you, perhaps I'm best positioned to answer that question. Again, I think the virtualization is the direction that eventually we will be moving in, but resources are scarce. Each year, we have to look at what we can afford, what will move the city forward versus the cost of moving the city forward, to balance the different resources that we have. Do I think that virtualization will happen? Yes. We're looking at funding mechanisms. The operating budget this year, it's just not in the cards. Again, everything is tight from the state to the federal government, and certainly locally, we make sure that we maximize our resources, and, you know, we look at each penny that we spend, and we try to make sure that we deliver the best services possible, but we're also mindful of the taxpayers. Will it happen? We're waiting for the right funding source to come along, whether that be a grant or some other mechanism, so that it won't have a burden on the operating budget.
Okay, well, I guess that answers my question.
Alderman Ginatasio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Good evening. I did notice the other line item that was requested with a significant increase was the regular wages. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. I've requested, over the last few years, I've requested two of my staff's positions be reevaluated, the PC LAN WAN coordinators. Those two positions are just based on the range of their responsibilities. I've requested that their jobs be examined and reevaluated, and for, over the last few years, for a potential upgrade, but over the last few years, whether it be the economy or layoffs or other factors, those requests have been denied. So, this year, I requested, rather than a, an evaluation be performed, I put a line item in to actually do a one-time, not a one-time, a basic adjustment in their salary, their base salary, based on their counterparts in other towns. For instance, there are some towns of equal size or comparable size, anyway, to us as far as the equal positions. Danbury, Connecticut, their network administrator LAN WAN is getting paid $71,441 a year for equal position. Middletown, Connecticut, same position, $74,027. Meriden, Connecticut, $73,438 a year. New Haven, Connecticut, $85,347 for a similar position. And what I requested was, not, not the full difference, we're looking at typically about a 10 or higher percent difference. I requested a $5,000 increase to their base salary, which would offset the difference to some degree, not completely, but to some degree. And we're talking about two people that are doing the work of two themselves. There's enough work for four people of this, in this position across the city, and we're talking about, one of the people in this position works exclusively for police and fire, and the other works exclusively for the city, and that includes the school nurses and the rest of the city, including the library, health department, et cetera. So, it was my wish to be able to make that adjustment, and that was unfortunately cut.
Just to follow up through you, Mr. Chairman, are we able to retain these people, or has it created a hardship for you in the sense that these people are looking elsewhere? Are these people been in, have they been in this position for several years?
Yes, yes. One of, one of my PC LAN coordinators has been with the city for almost as long as I have, going on 17 years. Another has been with the city for probably closer to 10, but was with the Board of Ed prior to that. I don't believe either of them are wishing to leave. I think they're both very happy and content. They, they like working here, they like the users, they like their jobs, but I've been really struggling to... but, um, I've been really struggling to, um, to compensate them accordingly. Um, I understand, times are tough, um, but that was, it was just my, um, effort to try to correct something. But it is what it is and, um, we'll, uh, we'll move on.
And this was denied by the Board of Finance. Did they give you any reason? I'm sure that you presented them with, uh, the, the figures that you presented with us as far as what these jobs are paying in surrounding towns. Did they give you any type of, uh, reason why? Why not?
Um, no, they, they didn't ask. Um, I, and I believe it was, um, I believe it was cut prior to the Board of Finance. Um, I think it was under the conditions that, um, uh, the cer, the, the current circumstances with the budget, um, I think that the mayor needed us to keep our budget as close to zero increased as, as possible. So, um, I didn't have an opportunity to discuss that with the Board of Finance.
Just to follow up on the virtualization, in your professional opinion as our director of IT, is this, um, a situation that you feel should be addressed sooner than later? Um, being that it's put on the back burner, um, through the mayor's request and the finance board, um, do you feel that we could be, it could become a detriment? Or is it something that, um, you feel can, can wait?
Because we support police and fire, um, I think they are by far the most of my concern. Um, I don't know what the, the police and fire chiefs presented as far as their technology, um, plans and ideas, but I know it's on their minds as well. And, um, we have been looking for years to do this. So as far as whether it can wait, it depends on how long we wait. Um, if we're waiting months, yes, I'm sure we can wait months. Years, no, we can't wait years. So it really depends on how you define wait. But yes, it is critical at this point, uh, for, especially for the police department. Their systems are, uh, becoming, well, with the transition a few years ago to the Sun Guard system, um, those systems are much larger, um, much more critical as far as, um, how they're managed. They're not sitting on an, a single AS400, uh, well-supported by IBM and myself. Now they're distributed across multiple servers. We have to consider disaster recovery, we have to consider, um, failover, we have to consider, um, everything that comes with, with networking and, um, uh, and, and the vulnerabilities of these servers. So police and fire concern me enormously, but yes.
I appreciate you elaborating on that. I just wanted to ask you, is your only opportunity to request virtualization, is it during the budget cycle? Is, is this the only time that you get when you set your budget? In other words, if you don't get it now, is it going to be a whole nother, uh, cycle that you're going to have to wait until you can propose it again?
And Mr. Chairman, there are other funding mechanisms that we've discussed. Um, this is the operating budget. We're trying to fund some of these capital projects, some of these big expenses through other mechanisms. For example, uh, the LoCIP program, which is a state grant, uh, this is the type of project that, that might be eligible. Again, there are a lot of wishes that we have in the city, uh, but it's my responsibility as mayor, as well as the finance board and your board, to take a look and a second look and a third look at all these requests. Uh, if you see the budget, um, the departmental requests, uh, were cut by about two-and-a-half million dollars. Uh, when I went over, uh, the budgets with, with each of the directors and the agency chairs, uh, then the Board of Finance had another opportunity, they reduced the budget further. And I suspect, uh, by the end of this process, uh, the first or second week of May, your board will make additional revisions and additional reductions and perhaps some adjustments overall. So this is the, the normal process, but, um, th- those things that are critical to operations for public safety, for the, um, operation of, of the city, um, you know, they will be funded over time that, but we do have to do it in a way that's sensitive to the taxpayers, uh, and takes advantage of some of the other opportunities that we have within, uh, the city government.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, thank you Mayor Blake for your comments. I, um, wanted to ask the director, do you have the ability to realize grants through your department? Do you apply for grants, um, that would cover this type of virtualization?
Typically, we would not be eligible for grants from an, from an IT perspective. We would, uh, fall under some other departments that might, um, uh, receive grants that would, uh, we would piggyback on, so to speak. Um, there have been grants, as an example, um, the, the pilot project we did for the voice-over IP project, which was done for the health department back in two thousand nine, that was funded by a grant. So it was a health department grant, but it was an IT project. So those are the kinds of things that we can do and we, we look and the departments will work with us in those cases. But as an IT department, typically no. Um, however, there are some circumstances, uh, where the, either the capital region, uh, government agencies or the state may come in, well, and, and offer some collaborative type of solutions, which is where the VIEW permit came into play. That was a collaborative effort, um, on the, the capital region, um, uh, entities where they were able to, um, uh, come up with a, a particular program where we would all share those resources. So those are the kinds of things we can take advantage of.
Mr. Chairman, just to sum up, um, well, I, in hopes of that, I hope that we can collaborate with another department, maybe specifically police and fire to, um, you know, address this issue because I truly don't feel comfortable just letting it hang out there. So, um, I do, we just want to end with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you.
Gene, just help me to understand something. I think it could maybe be answered very quickly. In the, in the grade and step of the PC LAN people, forty-eight X, what does the X represent? That, that's top step or?
That's top step.
And what does N mean?
N is new, I believe.
New.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitale, N means the minimum step.
So it's first step?
The first step. Uh, in some, on some scales, you have a minimum and then a step one after minimum.
So, so those LAN people, are they not contractual? Um, are they not in a union? Are they in a union?
Oh, you're, you're talking about the?
Going back to the positions.
Two, two different issues. We've, I'm requesting new people, which is the forty-eight?
No, I understand that. I understand that. But in the department contract, it's sixty-seven, six-ninety-four, the mayor recommended whatever less, and the Board of Finance recommended four thousand or five thousand, three, four thou, five thousand less. Are they not contractual? Are they not in a union?
They are. This is, this is to increase their base salary, to put them at a different, for instance, their, their current grade is a forty-eight X.
It's forty-eight meaning what? What's forty-eight? Thousand?
No, forty-eight is, when you look at the, the contract, they're grouped in areas. Um, a, a grade forty-eight puts them in a salary range.
Right.
But it's not forty-eight thousand. It's, it's just a grouping.
But my, my point is, they're part of a union, they negotiate a contract.
They're union, yes.
They negotiate a contract. So isn't they, isn't the, isn't the burden on them to negotiate? See, the burden on them is not to create a new step or a higher step in a, in a beginning step because obviously unions take care of the people already in a position. So, you know, would, so you're asking that those positions, that's confusing, start at sixty-two thousand plus?
Their current pay scale, their current base pay is sixty-two thousand three-hundred-and-ninety-six.
Okay.
That's their current base, based on the, the pay grade of forty-eight.
Okay, I understand that, but why?
So I'm requesting that they get an upgrade to a grade forty-nine, which puts them in the great, in the salary range of sixty-seven thousand six-hundred-and-ninety-four.
So I don't underst, see, this is where it confuses me because if they're part of a union, they negotiate a contract.
Well, the employees don't negotiate the contract. They're, the, the, the committee negotiates the contract.
The negotiating committee negotiates with the city, right?
Correct, correct. I am, but they're not requesting the upgrade, I am.
Right. You're requesting an upgrade, so that should have been a negotiable piece that they should have gone into negotiations with, did they?
No, because it was denied.
I understand.
It was denied on the budgetary aspect.
Right, so I understand that. You're trying to?
If it's not going to get past the budget, it's not going to get past the commission.
Right, right, but it's a negotiated piece. It's, it's negotiations, that's what it's all about. When you go in there, you negotiate.
I agree, but if it's not going to pass the budget, there's no point in negotiating it at all.
I don't think it works that way. You negotiate with the union and this is what you get, and the contractual piece is what you get. And, and if they agree on the contract, the city is liable for the, for the contract. That's how I understand it.
I'm, I'm just following the steps that I'm given.
Hey, no, that's, I'm clear on it.
And these are the steps that are provided. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. And, um, I definitely want to, uh, thank you for all the great work you do, Director. I understand how difficult it is with, uh, technology and managing the, the city. Uh, there were two positions that you were looking to add.
Mm-hmm.
One of them, uh, the PC LAN coordinator. I can understand that position, but you're also looking to add a, a database administrator.
Correct.
Uh, could you elaborate on that position of what, uh, type of needs that we aren't able to meet right now?
Um, the database administrator, I've been asking for a database administrator for a few years now. Um, primarily, it kicked in when the police and, uh, fire departments went onto the Sun Guard system, which is a SQL-based system. Um, and what I'm concerned about is that we've got multiple production systems based on, SQL is only one of our, uh, our databases, uh, database, um, core databases, but we have many of them. So I was hoping that we could get a database administrator who could, on a day-to-day basis, focus on all of our applications, manage them, um, and, and, uh, work with the vendors to, to be sure that our data is, uh, clean, um, well-managed, um, and it would provide, uh, a, a go-to person in the event that we need to cross between the, the, the many applications that we have as far as the data tables. So a database administrator would, um, would be beneficial not just for me, but for the police and fire systems as well. Um, it would be a position that would, uh, span all the departments for all their applications and all their database. It would be, uh, exceptional for the city to have a DBA on staff and, and have that person exclusively for that function. I understand it's, uh, um, it's a, uh, a wish, not necessarily, um, something that, uh, given, given all the other factors, um, I understand that it's not something that is necessarily recognized as necessary, um, by people who are not in IT. But it's, uh, it, it is way overdue based on the number of applications that we support.
Um, thank you for the clarification. Um, there's just one additional thing I wanted to ask about the, um, the request to add new hardware and also, um, one thing you mentioned about, you know, moving to a cloud-based system like ADWOS or just something, uh, to take and manage the servers. I mean, virtualization, virtualization essentially allows you to do, um, more with less hardware.
Correct.
And, um, what are the type of limitations that you have with the current hardware? Uh, you mentioned that there was, you know, multiple different, um, locations that they're kind of, uh, stored at. And, I mean, is this, you want to build, you know, a couple of new servers or what is really the request for?
I have to admit, I only got some of your question. Um, I, I, as far as the DBA is concerned, you're asking where, I, I apologize, I'm sorry. There's some, there was some background noise going on that I.
I apologize. So, um, basically, um, I was, I was asking, you know, what type of hardware is really needed that, uh, you currently don't have? Uh, I mean, is it, is it aging hardware that you're replacing or are you just looking to take in, you know, move to more powerful systems?
Both. Um, we have some older hardware that is, um, uh, currently on older operating systems, which we find, uh, well, we feel is susceptible, um, to, uh, because it's no longer supported by Microsoft per se and, um, is, um, the patches may not necessarily protect us from vulnerabilities that we need to concern ourselves with. So we would like to see, um, all of our, all of our servers, uh, be at a level that we're comfortable with, and we can't do that based on, um, the, the staff and the support that we have today. Um, so hardware, um, operating systems, um, uh, the applications are, are requiring more power, more resources all the time, but they come at different times. You, you know, we'll, we'll have, uh, vendors, uh, come to us and say, well, our minimum requirements have changed, so you need to do X, Y, and Z. And so that we're shifting our gears, so now instead of focusing on this application, now we have to focus on this application. So this application goes by the wayside. Um, it's a constant struggle and a constant shift of our, our time and efforts. Um, it would be nice to have, uh, a virtualization situation where, um, we have all those resources, um, where we have redundancy built in, um, we can upgrade the one virtual server while we're working on, uh, another, uh, that won't impact the other. Does that help?
It does, thank you. And, um, I'm, just, just one additional question. Are you using, um, you know, any of the free available virtual software, um, you know, uh, systems? Or is it really some of the cost for the, the operating systems that you need to take and then license to put in the, uh, the VMs?
We are taking advantage of some of the free, um, licensing to some degree, but it is limited. Um, it's, uh, with the help of our consultants, um, they have recommended that, um, we go to a fully virtualized environment. If we're going to go that route, um, we'll get the best, um, uh, we'll get the best resources, um, the best of the environment by going with a full, fully virtualized, uh, licensed application.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alderman Vicarelli.
Which one is more important to you? If you had to prioritize, the database administrator or the LAN WAN coordinator?
Uh, the LAN WAN coordinator.
Alderman Ginizzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Alderman Vicarelli's point, I just wanted to add in the virtualization. Um, if you had to prioritize the three of them, would, would it still be the, the coordinator or would it, the virtualization be number one?
Okay, um, that's a tough one. Uh, I really can't say. Uh, they're equally important. Um, and, and the reason being is, um, it, it depends on which, which area you're looking at. In, from, from my perspective, um, the LAN WAN coordinator has been needed for a long time. Police and fire have one person, um, to support them. And when that person's not in or unavailable, they have to rely on consulting services or, in the case of the police department, police officers who are, um, covering IT functions as part of their day-to-day jobs. as part of their day-to-day jobs, which I don't know if that's the best use of a police officer's time. I'm sure that, and they're doing a great job, but I think in the case of the PC LAN WAN Coordinator, it would be hugely beneficial to Police and Fire, public safety, to have a secondary person, full-time, who would cross-train for both Police and Fire. And in the event that they should have time available, we could use them elsewhere in the city. But the virtualization is equally important, not only to us, but to Police and Fire. So, it all comes back to making sure our systems are well-managed and supported, and both of those things are equal in importance. So, it's really hard to answer that question definitively.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions for MIS Department? Seeing none, thank you very much, Jean.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you for answering all those questions, and thank you for the job that you do for the City of Milford. The next account, it will be number 4129, City Clerk, page 22, moved up from April 14th.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for providing, on behalf of the City Clerk's Office, the opportunity to present our budget for the fiscal 2016-17 year. As you know, our office is visited by hundreds of citizens each and every week. We are a true liaison to the community, and we take great pride in our public interactions. Our office is responsible for issuing certified copies of vital records. We issue marriage licenses, as well as burial and cremation records. The City Clerk's Office, all documents related to real estate transaction, collections of conveyance taxes, as well as filing, maintaining maps, trade names, military discharges, liquor license permits, and notary public certificates. The Office of City Clerk maintains the records for all the boards and commissions of the city meetings. These meetings and agenda are filed in our office. We are guided by local, state, and federal laws, particularly as it relates to freedom of information. We work regularly with the registrar's office all year long. We are the direct conduit of information and updates that come from the Secretary of State. We have just finished the presidential primary, which turned out to be quite a whirlwind of participation. We are anticipating another primary in August, and look forward to the presidential election, which is drawing many new voters' interest in leaps and bounds. The City Clerk maintains the issuance of dog licenses and sportsman licenses that are required by the Connecticut state laws. Last year, we had a record number of licenses due to the diligence of the animal control canvassing, and we also serve in the capacity as accepting agent for civil actions for the city. Our office processes claims and suits brought against the city, and we submit these documents to the city attorney and risk manager. Our community interest is far-reaching. We, along with the other departments, conduct community campaigns all year long. For example, this past winter, we once again participated, along with the Milford firefighters, to enhance their Toys for Tots programs. This year, we are accepting donations for the Bethel Center during the 47th Annual Municipal Clerks Week, taking place the first week of May. Last year, I reported that we were in the planning stages of procuring an up-to-date copying machine printer that interfaced with our computers, to enable the public to print land records without having the wear and tear on our historical books. I'm happy to say that we have had this up and running since last June, and we have received numerous kudos. After collaborating with the mayor, I have prepared and distributed the City Clerk's first newsletter, that is filled with an abundance of information from departments and organizations citywide. We have placed it on our city website with the help of Jean Lasik, and have emailed copies to interested citizens. I have included a copy for each one of you tonight. We are preparing to the scanning of our vital records, which will be a huge and ongoing project. And soon, we will be welcoming the acceptance of credit and debit cards in our office in the upcoming months. I know that you all have a copy of the City Clerk's budget proposed, and I will be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Alderman Beccarelli.
Good evening.
Hello.
On your capital outlay, let's see, 49800601, a security system, you've asked for $11,200. Could you just tell me a little bit about that?
Yes, I actually asked for it last year as well. I have a real concern about our vault, which contains a lot of records, and the use of cellphones that are carried, people can take pictures, steal, I mean, we take in fees for this, and it can be stealing from our funds. But not only am I concerned about that, I'm concerned, in today's day and age, with the security of our office, as well as the tax office, as well as the tax assessor's office and the probate. That little corridor is, I believe we need security in there, some kind of security system.
Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Joanne, you just, on the security system, I remember you bringing it up last year, too. Two things, what is it, what is the violation? You can take records out of the vault there, and the land records in your office, and copy them, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So, but you can't photograph them inside the vault. Why is that?
Because you're not allowed to photograph the land records, they'd be getting them for free.
See. Do you know of any other municipality that has a security system? I mean, is this, there's obviously a figure attached to this. I mean, have you compared this with other systems?
I have.
Could you just give me a little?
I did that last year, and I'd be happy to give you the report that I got back this year. I don't have it here.
Oh, no, that's okay. But there are comparable systems in place in other life-size municipalities?
And just to piggyback a little bit off of that, we did have Milford Police Department come in and take a look at our vault, and I know that, I believe it's a concern of Peters as well, with the tax office, so.
Mr. Chairman, through you, to Alderman Smith, the Police Department did do an audit. They are leading the charge for security upgrades and enhancements. If you remember, about, I think, a year and a half ago, there was funding set aside for security cameras and other security upgrades. There have been problems rolling that out because of the contract with the vendor, but they are moving forward with that. But this is one of those offices that has already been audited. There's been other requests for some other audits, just because, again, the news that you hear across the country, some of the issues that we've had locally, you know, within the region, within the state, within the country, it does make us all hyper vigilant, and we are looking at security upgrades citywide.
If I could, Ms. Chairman. Mr. Mayor, just so I understand, you're referring to this in terms of a police audit that's been done, is this something that would be part of some of the requests that the City Clerk is asking for, and security would be part of a larger program that would be directed through the Police Department?
The Police Department is, as you recall, about a year and a half ago, were replacing and supplementing security cameras, as well as panic buttons, I don't know if that's the right term, throughout the city. I don't want to go into details of security operations, but they are pursuing enhancements and replacements of some existing security infrastructure. And as part of that, they looked at other town offices, including doing an audit of some offices within Parsons. They're in the process of implementing new security measures citywide.
Thank you. Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any more questions? Alderman Bevan?
Thank you, through you. I'm going to get back onto the security system. In your opinion, I've been in the vault area, are there areas where people without phones, I'm not talking about taking pictures, could they actually steal records without you knowing about it?
Absolutely.
And the security system that you're thinking of would probably stop?
The way that our vault is situated, Alderman Bevan, we can't look, there's one person that actually can look directly into the vault, and, but the way the situation, the counter is situated, she can't really even see in there.
So, there's actually a possible theft problem that could happen without this?
We hope not.
Thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Hi, Joanne, thank you. I'm confused, again, over a lot of these things, items, but you're asking for $11,200, and obviously, I mean, a quick fix would be visuals into the vault, on a monitor that could be seen by you or all the clerks in the office. You go to Costco, and we can buy that for $200, $300, and set something up, and I can't see why we have to wait for the city to provide an overall security system. You should have that ability to look into the vaults without having eyeball it by an individual who looks, who sits straight ahead of it, because she would have the only vision on that vault, and everybody in that office should see what's going on in that vault. There could be a lot of things going on in the vault, not only stealing of records or whatever, but why can't we have a fast, quick fix on this, rather than waiting for the entire city to get going?
That I'm not quite sure.
The mayor, then, why can't we just simply put something less expensive, so there's visibility in there? I mean, these are our records, these are historical, these are people that are going in there all of the time to research and do whatever they need to do, but we can buy a simple, a simple video camera, put it up there with a tape on it, and a monitor.
Again, I'll let the Police Chief address this, because it is a city security issue, but in the past, once you provide cameras anywheres within the city, you have to be able to utilize those cameras for security purposes, because there are liability issues associated with it. You've heard that when people have asked about putting dummy cameras in areas, because it would help with graffiti and things like that, this is something similar. If there isn't the ability for the police to easily access these cameras, if there isn't the ability of someone else to easily access these cameras, there becomes liability issues for the city. To have a $300 camera that you could purchase at Costco, while it's fine in a, you know, a house, I don't think that the Police Department or the Police Chief would endorse that, even that quick fix for this situation. But again, I will follow up with the Police Chief, I will see if that's something that he would endorse.
Well, the Police Chief might not be in favor of this, but the fact remains that we're not, it's not high-tech here. We just need visual contact in that vault. I mean, later on, when you want to become so sophisticated, fine, you could turn things over, but less is best at this point. Instead of spending $11,000 now, go out and spend a $500 bill and get the security in there. So, I mean, our City Clerk needs to be somewhat relaxed about the idea that nothing's going on in there, and they could view it at any point in time that they can, and walk in there and question any behavior that's not appropriate, whether, you know, taking pictures, you're, whatever it might be. But I, you know, I can't see where we're in a great state of top security here by the Police Department. You know, they have a lot to do, I understand, and I, you know, you take a lot of liability, but the fact remains that this is a quick fix, and there's no such thing that we can't do a quick fix. And I don't think it has anything to do with the Police Department, I just think it's internal, that they have something that they can look at and view in that vault. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, through you, to Alderman Vitale, there are ways that we can address this. I don't know if enhanced technology is the answer, perhaps where we position people that work within the City Clerk's Office. Again, the City of Milford has operated for 377 years, the City Clerk's Office has been around for almost that entire period of time, and, you know, we have had a lot of success, other than the flood of 1982, there hasn't been a lot of damage and destruction to our records. There has been some, but we have done a good job making sure that those vaults do stay safe.
It's a different time, in a different place, with different people. 300 years ago doesn't make it okay today. I mean, if we were dealing with something else, I mean, we're going to be either proactive or reactive, and I think we need to be proactive. For a little bit of money, we could be proactive and give some relaxation and some security to the people that work there. I mean, you're going to move people, you're going to open the wall, so you can have a bigger view, so everybody can look in there? You know, it doesn't make sense. It really doesn't make sense, and I think we should spend the little bit it would take to give a little, you know, a little enhancement to the office personnel. Thank you.
Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I have to concur with Alderman Vitale. I mean, I think it's probably, I go into the dry cleaners, and they have a camera up there, it probably costs 20 bucks, and they're watching what goes on. Now, I understand the mayor's point that there are privacy and other legalities involved in an official office. I'm still not clear, I would think, actually, now that people have personal cameras on them, they can, it probably would reduce the incidence of people stuffing land records down their pants and walking out, which I know is, you know, used to happen probably more frequently. But I do agree with that, and I, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I think it is something we need to discuss with the Police Department, but having a small, closed-circuit TV, or if there's really a problem with it, maybe we need to have somebody move some of the furniture around, have somebody staffed in there. I know you don't have enough people to stick in a vault, but, I mean, is that a possibility, Joanne?
I don't foresee it being a possibility, just the way, because of how the vault is situated, and the counter, now we have the counter to protect the public from entering. So, I don't under, I really don't think we have the capability of doing that. But thank you.
Alderman Beccarelli.
Well, it seems like a big part of the problem is people circumventing the, paying for the copies.
That's one issue.
That's one issue. Do you have any signs up that say no cellphone usage allowed in that area?
All over.
Yeah, so, okay, so if somebody's got a cellphone in their hand, then you know they're breaking your policy, so, okay. Now, I was just wondering about that. Thank you.
Alderman Chilitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Good evening, Joanne. I'd just like to thank you for this, this City Clerk's newsletter. I think this is a great idea. I know there's a lot of information that travels through your office, and I'm actually looking forward to next month's edition. Or is this going to be?
It's going to be quarterly to begin with.
Quarterly?
It does take time to do that, and I want to say that there have been a lot of departments that have been very helpful in supplying that information to me.
Okay.
And some of other departments, I've got quite a big, quite a bit of feedback from other departments that are looking forward to the next edition and supplying me with more information.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, and I also would like to comment on the security system. I think it is a vital concern, and you've been proactive in bringing it to the board's attention, not once, but twice, and I can't imagine why it wasn't granted or requested. It just surprises me. But I think that it should be addressed in some fashion. I don't think that we should continue to discuss it. I do want to ask the mayor, what came out of the police audit? Because you did make a comment that the police did audit the facility, but you didn't really share with us what the end result was. Did they feel that there's a need, or did they comment on it, or is it still being decided?
There were several recommendations. There were several recommendations and degrees of the recommendations, I don't want to get into the details of it, but again, I'm letting the police department and the police chief handle the rollout of any security upgrades.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Anderson.
Joanne, good evening, how are you?
Good.
Good. Since yesterday was the Connecticut presidential primary, I wondered if you would discuss the statistics relative to the number of new registered voters or those who newly enrolled and what the turnout was like yesterday? And, and as, given the fact that it is a presidential year, as you gear up, there are more responsibilities that are attendant with your office. I wonder if you might detail that a bit?
With all the interest in this presidential primary, there were hundreds of people, and I don't have those numbers, I'm sorry, because that really is the registrar's role, we only take in after-hours when they're not there, but people coming to be registered voters for the first time, but more so unaffiliated voters that wanted to change to a major party so that they could participate in the primary. So, and I will tell you that as much as it was advertised on the radio and TV, there were a lot of people, and Marty can attest to this, that showed up at the polls as unaffiliated voters and demanded their right to vote in yesterday's primary, and they could not. In some states, it is allowed if you're an unaffiliated voter to vote, but not in Connecticut. One other thing is that the Secretary of State has rolled out a new, what they call an EMS system, Election Management System, where we can actually input that, our figures at the end of the night into their system, rather than, we did, we did try out the new system because this was kind of a test for the primary, and we had our old system, Bonnie Pelosi, my assistant, she did a spreadsheet, the old way that we did, that we used to do it, just in case the election management system crashed. Well, I experienced a crash last night in the middle of inputting all the, Secretary of State was very helpful in the next five or 10 minutes, but if it had been the presidential election, it would have been a mess, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?
Any more questions for the city clerk? Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for the, you and your staff for the work that you do for the city and the residents of the city of Milford. Next department on the agenda is the Finance Department, account number 4210, page 37.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Peter Aradisi, Director of Finance. I have a couple of members of my department here tonight, Arian Swift, the city accountant, whom you've met before, and also Daniel Thomas, the city's assessor. I'd like to begin by thanking the Board of Aldermen and the Board of Finance and the mayor for your support over the years with the tremendous challenges that our department continually faces, and as we go into a new year, we have looked back on the past year, we've had one of the most difficult yearly audits that we've ever faced, and we dealt with that challenge. I know that the Affordable Care Act that I've mentioned before, many of you, maybe through your employers, have received those new healthcare forms, the Form 1095B or C. We had the challenge of creating those from scratch and generating those for all city employees and applicable retirees. My department was extremely busy, Arian herself, myself, working with key members of the Finance Department, as well as employees in HR and in MIS, working together to get this tremendous project implemented. It is something that we will have to deal with on an ongoing basis as the IRS requires monthly monitoring of healthcare benefits and enrollment, and we are dealing with documenting procedures, coming up with enhanced procedures to address the compliance issue related to that on an ongoing basis. I know that the Tax and Assessor's Office, as well as dealt with a variety of challenges. In particular, you've heard about the troubles at the DMV with their systems, that has had an impact on the Assessor's Office and on the Tax Office. They've made a number of changes over the past year or two and shifted some of the work through which, you know, that was done without much notice and pushed that, some of that lookup work onto the Tax Office, for example, and so that's new for us. As we begin a new year, we've looked at our budget, and as many city departments do, we try to do a lot more with less and be very prudent with the resources given to us, and we've done our part to reduce in some areas and to keep the budget relatively flat. We're asking for a very small increase in the revaluation operations line item. As you know, every five years, it's state mandated, I believe, that we undergo a revaluation, so at minimum, every five years, we need to increase our yearly contribution to the revaluation operations account, if you will, to fund the expenses related to this revaluation, which are yearly in nature. And so with that, I'll open it up to the board for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to point out that I've gone to Dan's office many occasions, and I just wanted to compliment yourself and your staff for the very efficient way of running your office. I've gone in there and come out of there with all the answers that I've ever had to ask, so I appreciate all that.
You're very welcome.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Director. I see that the, almost a million and three-quarter million-dollar budget, right? Somewhere around there. You asked for a $150 chair, calculator in office, $1,120 office equipment. Can you tell me what the $1,120 piece of equipment was going to be? And they rejected a calculator at $200, is that a little pocket calculator they can buy for $9.95? Or in the office chair, which is not a $700 chair, as we remember those expensive chairs, was the thinking behind that, or is there no thought put into this at all?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitale, I can assure you, we do think carefully about any increases that we put through to the mayor at the beginning of the budget cycle.
I was not referring to your thoughtless process. I was referring to a thoughtless process in a one, almost one and three-quarter million-dollar budget, and we cut $50 for a calculator or $200, measly amount of money. So, the $1,120 stands out, so what is that piece of equipment?
That was requested by Susan Taft, our tax collector. She had asked for, at each workstation in the Tax Office, I believe there are check endorsing, printing machines that are used by each of the tax clerks at the window, and at least one station at the back for the functions of daily tax collection. And those machines get a lot of wear and tear, and she wanted to just stay ahead of the game and purchase them now before the existing ones wore out.
And staying on that topic, does that expedite the process, those new machines?
I would, I would defer to Suda that, but from my conversations with her and her explanation, it doesn't necessarily expedite the process exponentially, but it is necessary. So if you have an endorser, at least one or two that break down, you're really crippled because that tax, those tax, those clerical people in the Tax Office need those machines on a constant basis in order to process transactions at the window.
And the other $200 calculator and $150 office chair was just cut for no reason, or was there an explanation, you don't need a chair and you don't need a calculator?
Mr. Chairman through you, just because I had the discussions at the department at the level with all the department heads, including Mr. Aradisi, we looked at the life expectancy of the existing calculators, the life expectancy of the existing office equipment, the chairs. Those things were evaluated, there was lengthy discussions over even those minimal items. We came to an agreement that we could go another year, perhaps more, or find a different source of funding. Things like grants that we've used in the past to purchase some of this are what we look to first. Tax dollars, we try not to use if at all possible. These are the type of things that when you run an operation of $200 million, you have to look at those nickel and dimes because they do add up to real money. Again, there's a whole host of wish list items, there's over $2.5 million that the department recommended that we did whittle down at the mayor's office level, and then it got, again, reduced at the Board of Finance. As I mentioned before, there are a whole host of things that, you know, if apples and, if some butts were apples and nuts, we'd all have a Merry Christmas, but you do have to look at the things that aren't necessary to improving the services, even if they do improve the services, what is the cost, what is the impact on the taxes?
Thank you for that explanation, but I'm sure there's tremendous impact on $200 calculator, $150 chair, but you still have to have the tools in the toolbox to do the job, and so, you know, coming from the professional in the department, as we always do, we always look to our professionals to guide us in our thinking. The fact remains that, you know, we're talking about a calculator, I would only hope that they either, they need another one because, because it expedites their processing of whatever they need it for, and a chair is a pretty, pretty, an item that is, needs for a level of comfortability for people to work in. I'm sure that we have, maybe you can, Peter, maybe you can take one of those chairs out of the Anna Sannaway room, maybe that'll help. Thank you.
Thank you through you. On the revale operations, I see this year you're looking at about $36,000 on that, and you're looking to bring that up to 59. And the mayor and the finance board has brought that down to 45. I guess my question will be, at the $45,000, is that enough to do your five-year revale? In your opinion?
I would say yes. In other words, the revaluation is labor-intensive, and unfortunately, in the past year, we were without one or two employees for the course of a full 12 months, which-
Excuse me, Dan, Dan, can you move that mic toward you? We're not picking it up.
Which directly affects what we do. In other words, we're one of the few offices, assessors offices in the state that does a full revaluation in-house, and in order to do that, it is extremely labor-intensive. So reducing the budget amount, when the mayor did at the time, seemed like an okay thing to do. In other words, in my view, I would prefer to have the money there, again, because you don't know exactly when and what the circumstances are with respect to the amount of work that's going to be done. In other words, we still have to do our permits on an annual basis, et cetera, and we do, again, most of this, if not all of it, in-house, but we do contract a little bit of that kind of work on the outside. So, three months ago, four months ago, when this was discussed, it seemed like an okay amount. Hindsight is 2020, and the effect of not having the staff that we typically would like to have had to do the work has put us a little behind, so it would be my druthers to say, yes, I would love to have that amount reinstated. Can we do the revaluation with the amount that's there? Most likely, yes, okay, but at great cost with respect to overtime, et cetera. So, again, that, the answer to that question is because it's so labor-intensive, you know, it just, it's, who's going to do the work? Are we going to do the work through an extensive amount of overtime, or is it going to be contracted out to individuals? So that's the way I would answer that particular question.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Alderman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Dan. So then, I'd have to piggyback on that and ask, what is our schedule? What kind of schedule are we operating on with respect to the revale process?
Well, the schedule would conclude ideally with the mailing of notices to the taxpayers with respect to the results of the revaluation mid-November. Now, and I think we're on track to complete that either then or mid-December, but a number of things can happen. Bad weather can curtail, let's say, our permitting and getting that done, so we may fall behind there. Again, there's a lot of moving targets here, and again, it's mostly labor-intensive. Worst-case scenario would be we didn't get the notices to taxpayers out until mid-January, at which time we would be in a position, most likely, to request an extension of the grant list signing. Grant lists are signed at the end of January every year, except for the two years that I've been here where we've done in-house revaluations. And those years, we are generally granted an extension whereby, which the state allows by statute, and occurs most likely when doing a reassessment, but definitely should occur when doing an in-house reassessment at the end of February, we would sign the grant list. So, are we tracking on time right now? Yes, it's tight, but we are still on schedule.
Thanks, and a question to the Finance Director through you, Mr. Chairman. Peter, with respect to line items, 415100, I'm sorry, 41890000 and 41170000, seasonal temp and miscellaneous professional fees and services. Those two line items historically show great variations. I wonder if you could provide some details about why there is such a wide range in both of those line items? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Anderson. Some of the key reasons to answer your questions, in particular, the seasonal temporary accounts, I believe some of the difference lies in the fact that our department has gone through several key retirements. When we lost Judy Haley, the longtime tax collector, that created a vacancy, and during that interim process, we needed to incur seasonal temporary expense related to that big transition. Also, in the Assessor's Office, there's been fluctuation in the need for seasonal temp, ongoing needs related to the operations of Dan's department, but also, he has had multiple vacancies as well due to departures and retirements within the Assessor's Office. So that, those are the primary reasons. The other thing that I might add is in, under miscellaneous professional fees and services, a few years ago, well, in the past, the Department of Motor Vehicles used to charge cities and towns a fee in order to play its part in, I believe, in the delinquent motor vehicle verification and collection process, but in recent years, that has changed, and they've shifted some of that work and realigned it so that they have put some of the work on the cities and towns and revamped it so that the bottom line is that they no longer charge that fee, which I believe was roughly in the $11,000, $12,000 range each year, so that was eliminated, so that brought it down.
Thanks very much for those explanations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions for the department head? Alderman Gold, Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to our Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to our finance director. Peter, last year, we had a lot of discussion over the, was it accountant one position that we added? Can you just elaborate on that, how it's going, and since we added that position after much discussion? Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Gorman. I'm pleased to announce that we did finally hire the accountant one. Her name is Vernell Bethel, and she comes from the private sector, but with great governmental accounting and finance experience. She had worked for many years as an auditor and as a senior auditor. And it, it was a long process to go through, working with human resources to go through the process of recruitment and interviewing the candidates, and we're very pleased that Vernell started with us, I believe it was the beginning of February, the first Monday in February. So she's only been with us for a short period of time. We've hit the ground running. We haven't given her too much time. There's a, you know, a lot more training to do, as you can imagine, in finance. I've said before, it takes a good six months at least, and, and ideally, a full 12-month cycle to, to really learn everything. But we've rolled up our sleeves and put a lot of pressure on her to really start on the long list of projects and initiatives and, and tasks that we are required to do. And you heard our city clerk mention that we're trying to implement credit card processing in her office, and I, I attribute that to the, the hard work the, that the new accountant has done. She's helped us get the RFQ implemented, and we are currently reviewing proposals, proposals from that RFQ from various companies. And we're even trying as a simultaneous phase or second phase to implement it in the tax office as well. So our goal is to implement credit card processing first in the city clerk's office, and then next to the tax office, and eventually to other departments within the city, such as the fire department, for example. But we wouldn't be able to do it, or we wouldn't have been able to get really started on it this fast without having the accountant one in place. So we're very pleased with having her here. She's been doing a phenomenal, a phenomenal job, and she's fit right in, not only with the staff in my department, but working with other departments within the city. And I anticipate that it will get better as we go forward. Thank you.
Alderman Casey.
Thank you. Through you to the finance director. I'm not sure if it was just a glitch in my case back in July, but when I paid my taxes, it took about a month before the check cleared, and I was told that it was, you know, just a staffing issue. Just, just a question, how, how quickly do, does the city normally deposit the receipts that it receives for the, for task collection through, through checks? And was there an issue in July with processing the payments?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Normally, the process doesn't take that long, but without going into a lot of detail, I'll just summarize by saying, we have suffered vacancies within the tax office related first to the tax collector leaving. Our tax collector as well has had personal health issues, so we've dealt with absences there. And so we also promoted from within, so that created another vacancy at a lower level within the department, which we're still dealing with. So we're still down a certified clerk at this point, and so the seasonal temporary help is often hard to get, but we're, we've been able to get at least one person in at a time to help us. But our bad luck is that these challenges have happened during the busy collection cycles of, of July and August. And so sometimes the mail would get backed up, and it, it took a, a little bit longer to process checks. But normally, it doesn't take that long.
Thank you.
Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I just have one quick question. You mentioned that the reevaluation is very labor-intensive and takes a lot of overtime, and also one of, one of the very few people that do it in-house. Is it cost-saving to take in, to have contractors do it?
I believe, yes, there's a tremendous cost savings, not only from the standpoint of manpower, and actually taught on this at the Cecil School a couple of years ago, but there's also a, a tremendous benefit with respect to the, in my opinion, ever-so-humble, and to the quality of the, of the reassessment itself. In other words, having someone who's knowledgeable about the sales and the market, et cetera, in the town by just being in place rather than someone coming from outside of town that may not necessarily know intimately all the areas of the town and the market therein. I think there's a tremendous savings just from the standpoint of taxpayer satisfaction. In other words, the tax is a difficult thing to agree with on, on our best day, but if it's, it's done well and competently, then at least you feel a little bit better about paying that tax, but also with reduction of court cases that might come up if you didn't have necessarily a knowledgeable in-house staff to do so. That, that's how I would respond to that.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation.
Any more questions from the board to the finance department? Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the finance director. Good evening. Peter, I just, it's more of an update. Last budget cycle, you expressed that we needed to upgrade our software, that for some reason, it was put on the back burner. Where are we with that? Are we in that transition mode?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Ginatasio. We are, it, it has been something that we think about every day. We've had discussions internally on how best to go about this tremendous project. I think the more years that have, the more years pass, the more complicated the project gets. You heard Jean's testimony from MIS, how the infrastructure of the, of the city's IT hardware has grown, as you can imagine. In some cases, some of the hardware is, is, is in need of an update. She mentioned the virtualization project, for example. We recently have met as a department, along with Jean at MIS. We had a two-hour meeting last week to really brainstorm and think about how best to embark upon this project. We've talked to our new accountant as well in terms of her role in the process. And at the end of the discussion, we came to the conclusion that, you know, it's not a mere matter of just simply upgrading the software and using the same company and upgrade, although that would seem to be one solution. We really think it's important to look at everything from a holistic point of view, not just simply the need to upgrade because the current software we have may no longer be supported in a number of years, but also because the city, as I've said before, is, has grown. The number of grants, the number of capital projects, the, just the work that we do from a benefit administration standpoint, changes to payroll, the union contracts, I can go on and on. It requires us to say, look, is it the best solution to upgrade the New World software to the .net and do that support? Perhaps, but we need to really study it carefully. We are challenged with needing some extra help in this process and coming up with a, a presentation, if you will, that we can really explain in detail in a clear way to the board of aldermen, to the board of finance, to the mayor, and also to the city departments and to my own department, because all of us as a city will be impacted by this upgrade. The, the software that we use, as Jean can, can attest to, is one of the most critical pieces of software for the city. The financial system, the human resources, payroll benefit system, capital asset, all of that is integral to the operations of the city. And so we can't take this project lightly. We can't, we want to make sure we do it right and that we have a seamless transition, as hard as that will be. So with that said, my next step is I have a meeting set up this Friday to talk to our auditing firm, who has a very good IT consulting arm, and just begin the discussion to explore and strategize how they can possibly help us with an RFP by the, hopefully by the end of this year. And that will be a very strong catalyst to then go forward with a, a good, clear plan in terms of how much funding we will need, whether the, the funding we established in 2008 is enough, and then to explain to all of us what the multiple alternatives are and help us all to reach the right decision. So I'm hoping that that discussion this Friday will bear a lot of fruit, and that will be the first step of many, many steps to get this, this massive and important project off the ground and implemented. In summary, I've told the mayor, I've told the departments, we've been told that it's a process that can take anywhere from 12 to 18 months, and it's not just the process of implementing, but post-mortem, having the training of all the affected city staff. And then the dilemma of, can MIS support the new software? Because you've heard of Jean's challenges in terms of the database administrator that she needs, the WAN LAN coordinator. It's just hard to, as I've said before, for finance to install and implement the project without IT support during the project and also after the project. You know, we need that support. And I think that's one of the key pieces that will come up for continual discussion as we go through the RFP and our eventual presentations to the boards of finance and the boards of aldermen. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a follow-up. Thank you. Peter, I appreciate your submission, but I just would like to respectfully, you know, make you aware of the fact that when that position was created in your testimony, that this new hire that you just recently hired, that that was going to be specific to their job description, and they were going to take on this, this transition, and they were going to be trained appropriately. And now what I'm hearing is you're not really sure how it's going to work and how it's going to happen, and if you're going to need additional support. So, you know, I just hope that it doesn't become an extra burden for the taxpayers because, you know, again, we, you're the professional, and we take your, you know, testimony and your advice, and, you know, we follow your lead. And, you know, I was opposed to the position, as you know, but it ended up being created through the budget, the last budget cycle. So I just hope that, you know, it doesn't continue to cost the taxpayers money. Thank you.
Any more questions for the finance department? Seeing none, we're going to move right on to the board of assessment appeals. Page 29, account number 4143. Any questions for the board of assessment appeals? Alderman Bevan.
Thank you. Through you. I know on the board of assessment and appeals, you have a secretary there.
Yes.
Where does she get paid out of?
Other-
Other?
Renumeration.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I'm sorry, no. That would be the seasonal temp. That's the seasonal temp. Other remuneration is the board members. Remuneration.
Is there a reason why you don't have a line item for a secretary like so many other, like zoning board of appeals, which is the next one down? They have a line item just for secretarial fees.
Just seasonal temp. That's all. She's, she's a seasonal temp.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Alderman Shaw.
Just simply why the increase?
Yes, we are in the year of reassessment, and so, yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Any more questions for the board of assessment appeals? Seeing none, thank you very much, Dan. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for answering all our important questions. And thank you for the work that you do for the city of Milford and the residents. The next account on our agenda would be the public works office. Page 63, account number 4420. Good evening, Mr. Saley.
Good evening, Chairman Vito. Thank you, everyone, for inviting me, and I'll open up to the board for questions on our budget. We submitted a budget that I believe is at zero, so if anyone has any questions on specific accounts, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Open up questions on the board for Mr. Saley. Department of Public Works Director. Just to remind the aldermen, we're going to be taking each of these departments, each accounts separately. So right now, we're just on the public works office. So please keep your questions to the public works office, page 63. Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Saley. Mr. Saley, what was the convincing argument to the board of finance that increased the budget over the mayor's budget?
I'm sorry, Alderman Vitale, I didn't hear that.
I think I can repeat that.
Something coughed.
Oh, okay. What was your convincing argument to the board of finance over the mayor's recommendation of 268 to 352? Am I reading that correctly?
Mr. Chair, if you look at the different depart, divisions of the departments in whole, there was actually a reduction. So the board of finance looked at the reductions in the solid waste budget and made two elimination of positions and supplanted it with one superintendent position.
But I, I believe-
Here he goes. I'm confused again.
Yeah, you're talking about, you want to talk about just the public works office, correct? Okay. So the mayor asked us to come in at a, a very tight budget, which we attempted to do. The mayor looked at the two accounts that you'll see that he reduced. One was overtime for the office staff. We went from 15 to 3. And then the other one was seasonal temporary. We went from 35,000 to, I asked for 35,000, to the mayor put in, left 1,000 in the account. The, the reason I asked for it, we are anticipating having some, a lot of grant work going on, and we need some administrative work to oversee the grant work. And the mayor believes that through other departments and other grants, we might be able to get some money to do that work.
I guess. Thank you.
So if you, it, it's account 4112 and account 4117.
Any more questions pertaining to the public works office? Alderman Bevan.
Thank you. Through you. Can you please explain for the public works office, even though you didn't ask for it on your original budget, the superintendent of public works, it wasn't in your original proposal, proposal to the mayor, but then the finance board came in and recommends $82,979 for this position? And I realize that this money is coming out of highway and parks, even though we were just told we're going to go these one item at a time. Is that true, that to pay for this position, it's coming from the elimination of a truck driver, a laborer, working leader, and a foreman, and assistant director? Is that one of the plans?
Yes. Chairman Vito, through you to Alderman Bevan. And I'm more than happy to answer that question. Is that, we'd like to go to that subject right now, or do you want to wait? Is that, we'd like to go to that subject right now or do you want to wait until we get to that department?
Right now, we're still on the Public Works Office.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure I'm clear. I have no problem answering the question.
Okay, then I'll rephrase that. I'll rephrase the question. The superintendent of Public Works, it was not in your original budget and the Board of Finance has put in $82,979. Could you explain what that position is?
I will answer that question then I will go through it. So when we were going through our contract negotiations with our bargaining unit, we looked at some of the savings we anticipate going through and we also saw a need in the department. It's my belief, and I'll share the information with the board, that there's certain departments that are under, don't have enough supervision for the staffing that they presently have. One of the things I want to share with you, if you look at the other departments that we have, the Building Grounds has 27 employees, they have three supervising positions, so it's a nine-to-one ratio. Waste Water has 24 staff members, they have five foremans and two working leaders to supervise and oversee those 24 employees. Solid Waste has 29 employees, actually 31 employees, one of them is a foreman and one of them is a working leader. So it's over a 15-to-one ratio. So when we looked at this, and then Parks and Highway was the worst offender, there used to be a position in Parks and Highway. It was the superintendent of Parks and Highway that oversaw two foremans. They presently have 41 employees that two foremans are using. Now, when a foreman goes out on vacation, when a foreman takes a sick day, when a foreman is just off for personal reasons, that means one supervisor is managing 41 employees. That's unreasonable. And I believe it's not in the best interest of the city to have those ratios, that you lose productivity. And that was one of the reasons when we looked at this, we're not really adding a position where, how I envision it, Alderman Bevan, is we're reallocating the resources. We're actually showing the city as a savings. We're coming before, we're reallocating from two positions to one and we believe it will be a net savings of about $60,000 in true value for next year. I also believe that through efficiencies and the opportunity to train and audit our departments, we'll see additional savings in approximately up to about $350,000 by having, in other words, having us be more efficient. And I think there's a real need in the department. Like I said, it was a position that was there 15 years ago. It was my understanding, it was cut and it wasn't cut for financial reasons. And there is a real need. When anyone, anyone that looks at it and sees your supervision of 20-to-1 or 41-to-1, you know, it's a lot. And just to give you an example, our supervisors or anyone that's been here a number of years, they can get five weeks vacation, they can get 13 holidays, and they get 15 sick days a year. So there's a lot of time off that internally you will not have any supervision. And I think it's in the best interest of the city to have that position reinstated.
Thank you very much. Alderman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just piggyback on that, Chris. Is it conceivable that this new position could be advertised and filled internally before it's offered externally?
Normally, any position in the city would be offered. There has been some discussions of exactly where this position would fit in and I'm open to those discussions. But yes, it would be posted internally. With that said, if it was a union position, it would be posted internally, but you could still hire from outside. That's part of the MSA contract.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Director Saley. There was some discussion on if we were going to offer that position to have it a non-union position. Will that work as well if, why does it have to be a union position?
My first priority would be to get it funded. If that was the conditions that this board put on it, then I would make that work. I believe that it's not going to matter for us one way or the other. It's not the, it's not the union or non-union, it's the employee that we hire and the training component. That's how I look at it, but I know other people have different opinions. Like I said, our first priority is getting it funded.
And one follow-up. Did you have a job description for that yet at this point?
Yes. I apologize, Alderman Gorman. I actually forwarded that to Chairman Vetro late this afternoon. He has an email, he probably hasn't received it yet, but there's a draft of a job description that I asked him to share with the board. I know you're not voting on this for a month, so I figured this would be a good opportunity for everyone to look at it, put their advice, one way or the other, what they like or don't like about it. It really is a pretty broad job description, but it's a generic one, it's a first draft.
Any more questions for the Public Works Office? Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Director. So I just want to clarify that this position would be able to oversee any different department throughout Public Works. Is that correct?
Presently, just so the board understands, presently we have a superintendent of Building and Grounds. That's Sly Mora. So this is, in its present configuration, it's a superintendent of Parks, Highway, Garage, and Solid Waste. We don't have a superintendent for those four divisions. We have a superintendent for Building and Grounds, we have a superintendent for Waste Water, which is Ed Kozlowski. So it would oversee four of the six divisions. That would be the goal. But again, it's open to a discussion with this board to see what you as a group would feel would be in the best interest of the city. Thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Director. Is Sly, are Sly and Ed, union?
They are both union members. Yes, sir.
And I happen to respectfully disagree with you, the fact that, you know, there's no difference between a union employee and a non-union employee. You know, a union employee works at the will, the will of the whole union and of the contract, while the non-union person really works with a contract that's limited and you have more disciplinary, I would imagine, disciplinary and abilities to hire and fire in that area. So, you know, that would be, that would be one of the stumbling blocks that I would have with that position. Thank you.
And like I said, Alderman Vitale, I'm open to the discussion. I'm not opposed to one way or the other. My priority would be to get the position funded. I believe, like I have stated, I believe there is a true need. And I know, I've been here for a little while, for, you know, today and listening, everyone has a need and there is a truth. And on the flip side, you know, there's also the taxpayers' component. What I would say to you, if you look at the budget that we proposed, it's going to be a net savings to the city and we're going to have more supervision, which will in turn increase our efficiencies. One of the things we talked about is trying to have more customer service, a better response time. We've improved, but we have a long ways to go and I think this position will help in that effect. When people call, they want to know that someone's at the other end of the line. We have, we've just settled our contract with our bargaining unit and as you, as this group knows, it was a very fair contract. I think it was very helpful for the city. We have a TA with our MSA bargaining unit that I think worked really well for both parties, but I think it gave the city some opportunities that weren't there previously. And when that gets ratified, I'll be more than happy to discuss those with you also. So I'm pretty excited about where we're going.
But your main concern is to get the position funded, but it needs to be funded and the guidance of the board, if we say that, you know, it has to be a union or non-union individual, then that's the guidelines that you need to work with. So it's not only important because it's, each of us look at it differently. So it's extremely important to know that you are given the parameters to work with prior to getting the position in place. So, thank you.
Yes, and that's what I explained to the Alderman, that if you are, if you look at my request in a favorable way, I'll be very appreciative of that. And whatever conditions you put on, we're going to make that work. Thank you.
Any more questions for the Public Works Office? Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Good evening, Mr. Saley.
Alderman Genitazio, good evening.
Thank you for your presentation and I'm still pondering this superintendent of Public Works. I do have some questions for you directly to that position. First and foremost, you're eliminating two positions, a truck driver and what was the second position?
It's a, it's a working leader and a truck driver. It entails about $95,000 worth of salary.
Okay. And can you share with the board, are these, these are presently filled positions or they're not filled?
These are positions that we, with the contract where the contract was, we haven't filled them. There were recent retirees. We thought it was in the best interest of the city not to fill the positions, especially as we're progressing into the automated trucks. And so they are open positions presently.
Okay. And being that the fact that you mentioned automated trucks, I know that we've, this board's followed your lead and has been very generous in bonding money and becoming more automated. And with that, you've made a point that the city would save money through attrition. Is that still the case?
Yes, I believe that will be the case. I believe, we have, the percentage of people that retire is two or three, sometimes four a year. So I believe in the next, you know, every year we'll see some retirements. And with automation, we'll see some efficiency. So yes, I will stand by that and we will definitely see savings in that department.
And most of it, I know we discussed this prior, we, I think presently, we still have three men on a garbage truck and eventually we'll have one.
There will be certain areas that, tighter areas that the trucks might not be able to get into or if we're going to increase services. We've talked about a few different scenarios. So having more response to the parks and the beaches, the city beaches, presently, there's been no budgeted money for overtime on Saturdays and Sundays for employees to go to beaches, you know, for us to clean up the trash. We've done it through overtime and we'd like the opportunity to continue to do that. I think it's a good city service when people come to a beach and it's clean. And I think everyone at the board realizes that the amount of activity that you see at Gulf Beach and especially at Walnut Beach and Woodmont Beach, there's a real need for trash collection. So it's one of the things we're going to be looking at, different avenues to accomplish.
Okay. And you mentioned beaches, so that's really a seasonal thing to your point, but there's a new approach. And so you don't want to continue to service those beaches with overtime. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I said we've done it with overtime and we will continue to do it with overtime. So we'll probably, in the next budget season, not this budget season, we will look to say, you know, maybe fund it a little bit more in the overtime. That's our contract obligation that we'd have to pay overtime on Saturdays and Sundays.
Okay. Do you have the liberty to discuss the new contract that has been passed based on operations?
Which, the supervisors or the bargaining unit?
The labor component and through you, Mr. Chairman, I'm, my objective here is, what I'm trying to, help me to understand is if we have people that are retiring through attrition, and it's going to happen to your testimony, it could be two to three people a year, okay? And we have the flexibility through our new contract negotiation where we have not one person doing one specific job, where we can take them off a job and put them in a different area to become more efficient. So we have that component as well. To me, the logical thing is through attrition, there's going to be less people to supervise. Okay? That's my perspective. And if we have the flexibility, if we can move from one person from one department to another, I feel that that's an advantage for the taxpayer. So we are going to realize a savings and we're not going to be depleting that overtime account. So we're going to be able to get more things done in a regular eight-hour day or six-hour day. I don't know.
Eight-hour day.
Eight-hour day. So, you know, I, we all have a need. There's always a need. We all could use more help and that's, you know, part of growing. And, you know, we haven't really received delivery on these trucks. So I question the fact that, you know, you are anticipating this and, you know, can you maybe elaborate on that a little bit?
So I think you bring up a great point. Where is the need and where do we see the savings? And I'll give you a few examples. Where the High Street, where the city acquired the property through the state grant for the High Street property, the city has gone in and been what I consider the general contractor of that project. We've gone in and cleared the whole lot with supervision. We've put a base down. We're in the process now of doing all the drainage work with inside design, inside surveying. We're going to be putting some lighting on that location. We anticipate paving that location. Again, being the general contractor, which we've never done before, we've always hired it out as a company. And the city has a lot of resources and they have a lot of qualified individuals that can do some good work, but they also need supervision, you know? And that's one of the reasons. So I use that as an example. We're going to be paving that whole lot. We're going to be lining that whole lot. Walnut Beach, Gulf Beach, any of the areas, we've done all the, we're doing all the municipal buildings right now. Our Bob Trapp and Keith Doyle are our sign and line striping. We have a plan. They went out and executed the plan and they're in the process of redoing all the parking requirements down at these beaches, all in-house work. Dry Beach, another example. We renovated the outside of that building in the fall. We ran out of time, so we didn't complete it. We put a binder course down. Again, no design work. It was all internal engineering and our supervision. We redid some of the drainage. We did the, we used, we worked with a contractor to do all, with our state city contract, I'm sorry, city contract to do all the sidewalk work. We paved it. We're going to anticipate doing the outside of that building, renovating the outside of that building. We're going to be doing the same at West Shore Community Center. We're going to be doing the same at the Margaret Egan Center, another example of where we need supervision. We did the library roof recently. It was a 22,000 or 21,000 square foot roof. Our pricing, because we acted as the general contractor with our Building and Grounds Foreman Sean Bennett overseeing the construction. So we didn't hire a GC at 5, 6, 7, 8% of the total number. We also think we had great pricing. We did our own specs on it. We sent the specs out and I think our price was under $15 a square foot, which is very good for the work that we got done. Plus, no, no construction administration. Dorina Place is another example, the first time in 30 years that the city has done inside design and construction administration of a sewer project. They're relining, I'm sorry, they're reconstructing that whole sewer line. It's a remove and replace of an eight-inch line and then doing all the laterals. Then we're going to follow suit with our engineering department and we're going to redo all the curbs and sidewalks and pave that road using our state contract to do it. So there's real savings when it's appropriate. Alderman Vitale brought up an example that he thought maybe we could do demo work and that was one of the areas that I disagreed with him. Because number one, it is a very expertise thing. We don't want to be dropping a building on the wrong people. And in today's market, you can get real good value if you bid out certain things. And that's what we did, but we acted as a general contractor at that and we did all the footwork. In other words, got all the permits and everything else that we needed.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Saley, thank you for all the information. I know, I know the intentions are well and good. I'm just a little skeptical because you are approaching everything as a general contractor and that's not typical for a municipality. And I think this is a vision that you have. And getting back to this superintendent public works position, you said that most of the emphasis is going to be put on solid waste. Okay? That's what you said here this evening. So how are we going to act as a general contractor in that respect?
Well, I think, I think what I said was that the initial position will require a lot of supervision in solid waste. We're fundamentally changing how we collect trash in the city. I mean, it's a major change and I want to express that to people. We're going from what we used to collect trash the way for the last 35, 40 years to an automated system. And I believe that it's going to require supervision and training. You're going to get, put somebody in a $300,000 vehicle that has an extended arm. We want to make sure that they're trained properly, they're in service, and if they have a question, someone's right there in the driver's seat. Most people shadow and do it. We also, part of the contract, we have a two-week training component with the contractor, but we believe that it also is going to be paramount that we have supervision in those. Now, your next question will probably be, well, that's all done and said and done. What's the next thing? This is the great thing about the city, there's always going to be a next thing. And what I would tell you is 30 years ago, we had a major engineering department that did a ton... years ago, we had a major engineering department that did a ton of site work in this city, and there's certain aspects that I believe through efficiencies we can do, and the technology's there with the software that we can do, that we can do a lot of drainage work, we're looking to do, we didn't get C D B G money for Point Beach, and Greg Poduski is our new city engineer, not new, he's been there four or five months, but he's in the process of doing tentative designs, that we're going to do that work in-house, and, and I know everyone says, oh geez, you can do less with more, or more with less, whatever it is, the truth be said, we, we run a very tight operation, we take, our departments take specific things onboard, we've done, we've done three of the conference rooms at the Parsons, I, I would ask anyone if would like to go look at the conference rooms that, that we just did at Parsons in the last year, it was usually almost a month for each, we hired one outside contractor to do the flooring, but again, we were the, we were the construction administrator of it, we just totally renovated the Parsons auditorium, and again, I would highly recommend people go and look at it, it took us a month and a half, we worked with some outside contractors to do the flooring, but we did all the painting, all the repairs, there's a lot of good work getting done in the city, and, and I think there's an opportunity with the needs of the city, and again, it's the board's discretion, do, do we want to extend our, our, our customer service component, do we want to be more helpful to residents, and there is a, a big improvement that we need to still do in that, in that regard.
Mr. Chairman, through you, thank you for allowing me to talk, I wanted to ask you, you know, when you came before us with the plan to automate the trucks and to look at how we pick up our garbage differently, at that point in time, you never once, you know, made a point or alluded to the fact that you might need more supervision, so for me, you know, as an alderman, looking at the purse strings of the city, you know, we have to look at the whole picture, not just, not just you, and, and I know what you do is very important to you, and, and you have a lot of passion in what you do, and, and that says a lot for the progress that we've made up until this point, I, I just feel like if we're going to lose people through attrition, through automation and things like that, why do we need more supervision if we're going to have less manpower, that's my number one point that I wanted to make, and as far as approaching things as a general contractor, I could see in some situations where it could be more convenient, but I was always under the impression that the private sector with certain things was always more economical viable for the taxpayer, rather than have put these special projects go, you know, in the hands of the city, so, you know, this is something that I'm contemplating, and I would just like to sum it up with, this recommendation from you, this came kind of later, after the fact, and it, it doesn't really, can you elaborate on that, because it wasn't something that we were made aware of at the beginning stage of this process?
And, and I do apologize, you, you're correct on that, but I think as, as the process evolved through contract negotiations, and I don't want to necessarily get into the details of it, we became aware that we believe that there's a need for more supervision. Now, the mayor had asked me to keep a zero budget, and, and I understood, because the taxpayers of Milford, you know, he, he has to be responsive to the taxpayers, what I would say is, everything is about investing, this is an investment into the city, it's, it's less than a zero because we're actually going to save money, supervision, there is a need there, a, a strong need, I believe, and there's also a strong need to show savings, and you're, Alderman Genetasi, you're a hundred percent right, there are certain things, because of our cost component, we can't compete, you were part of the team that went up to Winter Brothers, and I was surprised, they're the only recycling company or plant that has union members, I, I was told that they were all non-union members, so it's interesting, certain things, if you do it well and you do it efficiently, you can compete, and there's certain things we can do well, we have fixed costs already, we have the equipment, we have the manpower, we have the resources, what we're doing is we're showing that we're more efficient doing certain things, and, and, and I think it shows the staff are more responsive, they're, they're doing new creative things, I mean, there's nothing like seeing a staff that have wanted to a building and taken down concrete block, redone a, redone a room, and I recommend that you go to the, the last conference room, we removed walls, they did all the electrical work, all in-house, and the building right now, we're waiting for a smart board to get delivered, so it'll give us the opportunity to do a lot of training in that room, we increased the room by about, I think about three-hundred-and-fifty feet, square feet, so these are the things that we can do, and you're, you're, you know, you're, you're correct, in, in twenty years, there might not be as need for this, but right now, and I see in the next five or ten years, there is a need for that position, and I would say this, if you look at the just pure numbers of it all, you want a ratio of twelve to one supervisors, that's, that's just industry standard, almost anything, in this one department, we're twenty to twenty-one to one, and, and so there is a need.
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up and to some.
Alderman Genetasi, you really need to sum it up, you're taking up quite a bit of time for your alderman, right, so sum it up, you've been summing it up for quite a long time, we have other aldermen that have questions.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm speaking specific to the budget, and, and this is how we gather our information, this is how we deliberate, so we can make an educated decision based on all the citizens and, and the taxpayers of Milford, so I, I will, if you will allow me to finish up, I will gladly do that.
I noticed that you're questioning the department head on his supervision ability, if he needs what he needs, it's reasonable because he's the professional in that particular field, you're, I don't like, I'm not comfortable with the fact that you're questioning the fact that he needs a supervisor for it, his, his needs, that he, he has explained that.
Mr. Chairman, and, and, all right, well, you know, in all fairness, it seems like every time I'm saying something that you don't agree with, you, you, you try to interrupt me and not allow me to speak, I, I'm just trying to gather information, that's all I'm trying to do here.
Out of respect, go ahead, finish up.
Thank you. Mr. Saley, let me just sum it up with this, I believe through my constituents and the people that I talk to, that all the services are being met, that the trash is being picked up, the bulk pick up, and I know that you're doing a good job, so in my opinion, all the services are being met, I'm just a little reluctant to get into this general contracting approach, okay, because that to me could feed more positions in the future, and I think that we need to be very cognizant of what we're doing and how we're doing it, and I don't think that we need to grow the department to that level, thank you.
Alderman Beatty, you had your hand up, half an hour ago?
It may be a moot point now, but I thought that we had the discussion about the, the need for supervision, almost beyond the point of productive discussion, because, at, at, at previous instance, and you, and I say that beyond the point of productive discussion, because it, it bled a little into the, the contact, the contract negotiations that were going on at the time, and.
Alderman Beatty, could you?
Yes.
Bring it a little closer to your.
And you explained to us, you actually said that you were worried about, particularly with the, the new system of picking up trash, that there might be some sabotaging and that you yourself would be riding on the truck, so I'm, I'm wondering if we couldn't come to some conclusion about when and where we're going to discuss that, because that was discussed, I mean, you just said we, that the idea of the supervision is new, and it, and it isn't. Am I, am I correct? Did we quiz you on this before, or you gave an answer? We even talked about, you were going to come in with a specific strategic plan of, of phase one, phase two, phase three, including the supervision that was necessary because of this realignment.
I've had discussions with, with the mayor and other individuals, and you're correct, we've talked about it, I don't know if everyone was part of the discussions, but again, I just stand by my point, that I believe that it's a needed position, and I believe.
Well, I wasn't privy to any private discussion, so it had to be here, the public here, right? Okay.
Alderman Beckerelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I think I understand you're, in the Public Works Office, the superintendent of Public Works, the reallocation of two workers that won't be replaced for ninety-five thousand dollars, and we're going to have this other position here, and we have had discussions about it, I understand what you're saying, it is your department, it's your purview to move your, you know, the people around, like you need them, and this is what you're asking for, so, you know, myself, I don't have a problem with the, it's, it's not a, it's not costing us any money, because we're, we're just canceling two and bringing in another, and actually, even a little bit of a savings.
Yes.
But I would like to say that I do like, you're, you're on this, you're, you're trying to bring as much of our work in-house, you seem to be working very hard for the citizens and the taxpayers, to, to give them the biggest bang for their buck, so I want to thank you for that in the Public Works Office, and I understand this, your, this position, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions pertaining to public, Alderman Gurman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Director Saley, I do have to compliment you on some of the work that they've done over at the Parsons complex, the, the conference rooms, they really look nice, I think that was long overdue, so that's, that's a good compliment to you and the guys over there that did all the work, but another point that you brought up, on the parking lot over there next to the train station, so you're talking about paving, lighting, and stuff like that, but I thought it was understood that that was going to be a, a double-decker parking lot, so that'd all be ripped up and, you know, within, I don't know, four or five years, maybe the mayor or somebody can explain on that, but rather than investing in a lot of resources over there when it's just going to get ripped out in a number of years.
Thank you, Alderman Gurman, just to give you a little background on it, we, we anticipate having between seventy and seventy-four parking spaces, we believe that the return on investment that we're going to spend, between the lighting, the concrete work, the paving, is going to be about forty grand, you'll probably have a return on investment on that in about a year, year and a half, the issue we had, we contemplated using just the, the millings that we had as a base, but our concern was if, and, any, anyone would know, that if you have a trip and fall because you don't have a proper parking area, that could cost you fifty or a hundred thousand dollars, so we, our, our proper thought was, get the parking in there so residents can use it appropriately during, on the, at nights and on weekends, and, but I assume it's going to be charged during the day, and then start the process of either bonding or getting grant money to get the double-decker, that is ultimately the goal, and I believe there's a, a committee that's being formed, and I don't know who's on it, but about the process of what would be the best use of that property, this is a, we believe it's a five-year plan, again, always looking at what's in the best interest of the taxpayers and tax dollars, the return will be there, like I said, with probably within a year and a half, so it's a pretty good return.
Great, thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to the, Mr. Director, a couple of things, when we take on, or when you take on a large project, and we G C it, the fact remains that, in essence, isn't, is there not a foreman on a job, I mean, you just don't put laborers or people together without somebody, either a pusher or a foreman or something like that, and if so, if that's the case, is that not supervision in itself, number one, number two, you also stated, like, nothing stays the same, in ten years, you need it now, and so, and I'm in agreement with part of it, and my other piece is, if you don't need it, if you need it now, and maybe in ten, fifteen years, it's, it's outdated, we don't need that position anymore, to my point, that, you know, if you, if you have a person under contract rather than a union person, you can do without whatever you want to do within the department, but I think it's more difficult to, to, not unless you cut the position, and then it's always more rigmarole that you have to go through, so, to my point of the foreman, is there a foreman on every large job that you do, and is it not a supervisory position?
As, as I was explaining previously, Alderman Vitale, in Parks and Highway especially, there's an acute need, there's a, there's a twenty and twenty-one to one ratio, so if you have twenty employees, you can't be on every job site, and there are certain job sites that our foremans need to be on to, to actually run the job sites, example, we're, we're on High Street, and they're grading with a grading equipment, that the, the foreman has the experience and the expertise to use that grading equipment, some of the other individuals don't, so that gentleman will be there two or three days, working on that and putting drainage in, so he'll have five or six guys there, but that means there's fourteen other guys or fifteen other employees that aren't necessarily being as supervised as closely as we would like to see.
So there are no lead men, other than the foreman, the foreman's on a job, he supervises X amount of, of people, but when you have a crew, let's say on that High Street job, he's grading, he's doing all of the operating, operating the machinery, and then he has to leave, so is there not a lead man there that takes over and just kind of guides everybody else in their process?
It's, it's very interesting you bring that up, and, and I think this is one of the reasons why we're advocating for the position, if you go into building and grounds, there's twenty-seven total employees, not, I mean, bargaining union employees, and there's three supervisors, it's a nine-to-one ratio, that's building grounds, wastewater has five, five supervisors and two working leaders for, for twenty-four bargaining union employees, so that ratio is exceptional, it's very, very good, our garage has, has a working leader and a foreman for seven full-time employees, Parks and Highway, as I explained, had a superintendent fifteen years ago, and the reason was because they needed, they had that need, the gentleman retired, and it wasn't filled, and it wasn't for financial reasons, so there's a need there, as you look at the other departments that have it.
I understand that, but also there's a degree of difficulty to the job, if the jobs on site, or that site work, or that position is of higher degree of difficulty, it's not just cutting the grass, where you get on a machine and cut the grass, I don't know if you need supervision there, I don't think you do, but I don't know, maybe you do, but the fact is, if you're talking about wastewater, you're talking about, I think the degree of difficulty for those jobs is much higher than the job that of cutting grass or raking or, you know, landscaping at that particular point, so, you know, so when you talk about proportions and ratios, it may not all have to be that one to ten, or whatever it might be, like you say, it's one to five, one to twenty-four, and maybe one to twenty-four is okay, and maybe that job is okay because of the degree, degree of difficulty for that particular position and job.
I, I would answer that and say that, that Parks and Highway, you're, you're correct, some of it is cutting grass, and, and, but you still need supervision for cutting grass, things, things, things arise, and, and there's a lot of tree work that's getting done, we have a backlog of tree work, that we didn't have a tree crew for almost five years, a, a real tree crew, we have a tree crew now, so there's a backlog, tree work is a very dangerous component, sometimes there's one supervisor there, you know, making sure that the, the job goes off the right way, drainage work is critical, making sure that when we're putting in catch basins and, and repairing manholes and things like this, that they're done appropriately.
And how, and, just, okay, and I appreciate, you know, again, your passion for this, and I really appreciate all you do and everything else, but if you have a guy cutting trees, he's got to be an expert, so that foreman's not going to be, probably is less expert in cutting the trees and the provided kind of thing, where he knows what to cut and how to cut and how much to cut off the tree, so the foreman, I don't know if he has all that knowledge, it might, he might, but the fact remains that, you know, you have a lot of experts in the, in the, in the positions, you have master electricians and everything else, so does a master electrician supervise a master electrician, or does that superintendent have the knowledge of a master electrician to supervise them, but, you know, so I, I think there's a lot of individuality to jobs, and I still say, you know, I'm sensitive to the need of the position, under my, you know, the condition that I talked about, but the fact is, I, I just think that it's not all equitable, it's not, equitable does not always mean the same number of ratio per, per skill level or per difficulty of job, so, and I appreciate your, your, your explanation of it, thank you.
And I, I think the other component to, it's not just the supervision, it's the training component, we as a city, truthfully, don't do a great job times with training our employees, investing in the employees, and part of that is having a supervisor that can bring two or three employees to a, a, on a budding town, or a town that does something a lot better than us, and, and, and shadow them for a day, so that's one of, the other part is auditing, so a supervisor can go out and, for a day or two and actually audit a route, and audit how they're cutting grass, is there a more efficient way to do it, are we cutting grass in the, in, in example, are they doing the route appropriately, or are they jumping, there's a lot of different ways to look at it, the other thing that, and I didn't bring up, is you should have a succession plan, and you don't in this city, there's a lot of loss of knowledge when a department head leaves, or a, a, a working leader leaves, it's nice to have someone else that's working alongside of a department head, that understands what the department head does day in and day out, so that when the department head leaves, or when someone leaves, there's someone or when someone leaves, there's someone that can fill in for temporary basis. We, as a town, do not do this very well, and it's not just in my department. It's, you know, people leave and it's not filled for a number of months, and that, all that experience gets lost. And, you know, I can go on and on. I will use, the town of Fairfield is the template that I use, very similar town. They have a director of Public Works, they have assistant director of Public Works, and they have a superintendent of Public Works. Then they have nine foremans, okay? For a comparable-sized town, we, on the other hand, have a director and six foremans and some working leaders. So, it's a marked difference. And the question is, do you want to invest in that? And I agree, we have to be prudent with our money, but this proposal is actually a savings to the city.
Any more questions for the Public Works Office? Alderman Bevan.
My question isn't, my question is more or less, are we still on Public Works Office?
We're on Public Works Office, Mr. Alderman Bevan.
We haven't got off of Public Works, but we've talked about everything but the office right now. But we are still on the office, right?
You're discussing the supervisor position, Ms. Alderman Bevan.
Thank you very much.
That's Public Works Office. Questions pertaining to Public Works Office? We're going to move on, Mr. Sayly. Some of us have to go to work tomorrow morning. All kidding aside, the next apartment is 4421 Highway Parks, pages 65 through 68.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
Through you, thank you. Chris, I know that your department has been very active in working with Harbor Management Commission to secure the patio down by Lisbon Landing. I wondered if you can provide the board with some details about that project.
Sure. The Lisbon Landing patio, which has been there, I assume, for about 20 years, had some major settlement issues when it was originally installed. It was installed inappropriately. It wasn't secured, and honestly, it's amazing that no one got hurt. Buddy Swift has been very helpful with trying to redo that whole area, and I don't know if anyone's had the opportunity. Again, our guys went down there and did a lot of tree trimming that was in need. We have our city contractor, Edo Construction, that has, you know, just started the project down there. And they're resetting all the bluestone. They're repairing any areas that need to be repaired. They're fixing the subbase that was inadequate at best. And it's, hopefully, you know, I mean, not hopefully, when it's done, it's going to be a beautiful, beautiful component of the project. I'm not sure if anyone's been down there, but they should take a drive down.
And Chris, wasn't there a real concern about, legitimate concern about slip, striss, and falls? Is that right?
Yes, yes. There was, there was a lot of settlement issues on that, and we clarified it, and we took out a lot of the tripping hazards by making everything flush grade. And Buddy Swift has a plan to beautify around the flagpole. We're working out some of the steps. It's really, it's made a tremendous difference. And like I said, I recommend people going down and taking a look at it.
Thanks very much.
Any more questions pertaining to Highway Parks? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to compliment what's going on down there, it looks great. I've been down there almost on a daily basis, and it's almost completed. So, it's, the patio looks fantastic. There's new steps, all the concrete, and, you know, it's a great project, and it's going to be a very, again, the jewel of the city, you know, as we talked about before. So, it's a great upgrade. Thank you.
And I think what we're trying to do, I don't want to overestimate or overstate, we're not general contractors building houses. We go into projects like that, and we work with private contractors and ourselves to execute a project. And, you know, it's an exciting thing. We're going to be doing a lot of work down at the Margaret Egan Center. It's a building that we're going to be using some grant money to get the building up and running. And we're also going to be looking at a lot of the parking lots that we want to do some work. There's a real need, and you, as a board, and the mayor have been very supportive in getting us to resources. And we know it's not always easy, but we do appreciate it.
Any more questions pertaining to Highway Parks? Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, through you to Chris. On my original question of about 45 minutes ago, on the Highway and Parks part of the budget, you have two positions that are new that you wanted. One is a truck driver, laborer, working leader, and a foreman and assistant director. That comes up to about $93,000, which the mayor did not recommend, and the Finance Board did not recommend, and they are new positions. Do they have anything to do with the Public Works Office Superintendent of Public Works? This is a yes or no?
Well, I'm going to explain, if I may. The Parks and Highway, what I envision is that superintendent being in that division. And the initial with the Public Works Office, and I could be wrong, but I thought you were the one that brought it up because that's why we started this process, but it was never meant to be, and it's not in the budget right here. It was in last year's budget that we looked at, that I proposed, but this, for the Public Works Office I'm talking about, I anticipated it being in Parks and Highway, that position. And then the other position, I'm not exactly sure because I don't recall asking for a
Follow-up to that, if you didn't ask for the position, why is it in here under, where it says that you did ask for those two positions? And it wasn't funded by either the mayor or the Board of Finance?
Can you, can you show me?
That was on page 68 of the budget where it says truck driver, laborer, working leader, and foreman and assistant director. One's at $40,831, and the second one is at $52,154. There was no salary last year, so I'm looking at these as being new positions that no one has funded. And I guess my question still goes back to this $93,000 was, are those the two positions that you're doing away with that never existed to pay for the Superintendent of Public Works?
No, that's not correct.
Thank you very much.
Would you like me to explain? I'll explain that. The two positions are in sanitation. There are working leader, truck driver, working leader. That's 90, and I can go to the exact, if you want me to go to the exact one. It's a working leader at $49,962, and the other one is a laborer at $45,151. Those are the two positions that would be eliminated. The other, the other positions that you speak about, that you ask about, I asked for those positions, and the mayor took them out of the budget.
Any more questions regarding Highway Parks? Seeing none, we're going to move on to Building Maintenance, account number 4423, page 69 Any questions for the Director pertaining to Building Maintenance? Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, through you. Capital Outlays, you have a request for $25,000 for a van. The mayor recommends 5,000. The Finance Board agrees with the mayor for 5,000. My question is, what kind of van do you get for 5,000?
I would refer to Peter, but I believe sometimes the mayor leaves money in the budget so that at the end of the year, that we have a line item. If there's savings in the, if there's savings in the budget for the end of the year that we can put, we can have a budget transfer that you would agree to, and I'm not sure on this, but that's what I assume it is. So that if we have savings in that, in this whole department, we can make a budget transfer for a van. Went from 25 to 5.
As a follow-up.
I don't honestly recall, but I...
Is that, as a follow-up, is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
I'm taking a look at the line item. You're talking about page 70 under Capital Outlays, 49710402?
Yes, sir. The van. It's, right now, it was requested for $25,000, which I can understand is the price of a van, plus or minus sum, and you recommended 5,000. The Board of Finance backed you up with 5,000. And my question was, I don't think you can buy a van for 5,000, and Chris thinks that the 5,000 is put in there to keep the line item open. Is that true?
I think that this was one that we looked at. There was an issue with an existing van, and instead of purchasing a new one, we looked at a capital project to repair the old one. I don't know if, what the existing issue was, but from our discussions back in December. There was also a recent piece of equipment that the Building Department just received relatively recently from the Milford Police Department. They took a surplus van from the Police Department and restored it, and now Building Maintenance is actually using one of those former pieces of equipment that they just received that was past its useful life for the police, but could be repurposed for, for the Building Maintenance Department. Again, we try to reuse, recycle where one department may not be able to utilize it anymore. It's not dead at that point. We can still use it in other areas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chris.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the mayor. Mr. Mayor, if it's not a van for Capital Outlay, you don't want to put repairs under Capital Outlay. I mean, that's misappropriating in the different funding. Capital, when you repair something, it's not Capital Outlay. So, should that not have been zeroed out in repairs or increased by 5,000? I don't understand that.
If the chassis is still good and you need to replace the box, for example, we did the same thing with our fire department. We were able to reutilize the box for an ambulance, but we put a new chassis on it. We still had it under the ambulance budget, even though we were able to get it for half of what it would cost because we weren't purchasing a brand-new ambulance with, we were purchasing just the new chassis and, again, utilizing an old box or body on an old existing truck. That's, I think, what was contemplated in this line item as well.
But I, again, in this circumstance, whatever the repairs are, my question is that why would it be under Capital Outlay rather than not repairs, under the repairs in building, in garage or something like that?
Mr. Chairman, if I may add clarification through you, I can understand the discussions about the van, and the mayor is correct about the swap that happened with police, and I know that Public Works and the fleet always have a variety of needs, and we discuss a lot of things in December. But now that I look at the original submission for Building Maintenance, it appears that the 50,000, just to specify, was for roof, but it was not necessarily for repairs, but to replace the, if Chris could elaborate, the west shore roof. That's what the wording is on the BR2.
Excuse me, point of order. Peter, we're talking about the van.
Okay.
The van, in other words, what my concern is, why is it under Capital Outlay while it should be under repairs? Capital Outlay is something new.
Yes, it's, it's actually a typo. The correct account number, if I'm not mistaken, should be, it says here on the BR2, roof repairs, roofing for various buildings, $25,000. So, I would imagine that that was reduced to 5,000 because we were looking at alternative sources of funding for the various building roof repairs.
I can see the error there, but what, so what, the van didn't get zeroed out?
No.
What happened there?
I planned to correct that, to cross out van and put in the correct account number for roof, replacing roofs for various buildings.
It's 0502 Roof Repairs. This is 0402 Van, specifically Van. Is that a zeroed out? That there's, he's not getting any money for a van? Is it 5,000 to repair something that's coming over from the Police Department? And if it is, it shouldn't be in a Capital Outlay because Capital Outlay represents new materials or new structures?
The, I'd have to look back, besides this form, the mayor and I, we also have the original handwritten submission of the report, the forms that we give the departments. I'll have to look back at that and get to the bottom of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Any more questions regarding Building Maintenance?
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
I have a question with regard to electricity, which is account 44420000. It's funded at $650,000, which represents a decrease in the request of $25,000 from 675, and it looks as though historically it's been at 650. Is that a realistic figure, or are we looking at the 650 as a baseline with a possible adjustment later in the year?
Alderman Anderson, that's a, that's a very good question. We've started a number of energy efficiency programs. One is in this building itself. The other one was at Parsons. Once they're fully implemented, and the way, I don't know if everyone remembers, but part of the way the program works with the UI, the UI gives us an incentive of a certain dollar amount, and then they finance the difference over three years. And when, once that's paid, there's a real savings to the city. At first, it's a smaller savings. We anticipate with these two buildings to have a small savings. Can I guarantee it? No, but we anticipate that we should be in a good position. That's our goal. And we're continuing to look at other programs, other energy efficiency opportunities within the city.
But it's a very tight figure, isn't it?
Everything sometimes is very tight, yes, but I think it's a doable number.
Thank you.
Any more questions regarding Building Maintenance? No more. We're going to move on to the Engineering Department, account number 4424, page 72. Any questions to the Director pertaining to the Engineering Department? Seeing none, we'll move right along. Under General Garage, account number 4429, page 74. Alderman Grant.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I was just curious about the line item 49230310, the fuel system that was requested for $100,000 that was removed. Can you explain what that was?
The city, the city has a number of fuel depots. Public Works is one of them. We have two 10,000-gallon tanks, one for gas and one for diesel. They're underground. They were put in 1990, and I thought it was prudent to explore the opportunity to get them taken out of the ground. Now the new system, they want to be above ground. I was at two different locations. One was in Fairfield and one was in Danbury, that they just recently, when I say recently, the last two or three years, updated theirs and took them out of the ground. It's getting more and more expensive to insure underground tanks, and it's a 30-year shelf life on these tanks. So, we're reaching the end of the 30 years, and this is one of the things we're trying to do in the city, is not manage by emergency, but be proactive and look at things and plan appropriately. And our goal is to, again, come before this board and ask for funding for that, because it is a need, and it needs to be done in the next three years.
Thank you.
Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Mr. Sayly, under General Garage, can you direct me to the line item that represents the vehicle maintenance? Is that in this?
Well, there are quite a few.
Is it the Equipment Supply and Upkeep?
Yeah, 4335 Equipment Supply and Upkeep is the biggest one. Tires change and tubes, obviously, that's our tires. And then Auto Supply and Upkeep, and then lubricants. Those are our three biggest components. I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was speaking at...
I didn't realize I was speaking into the microphone.
Okay. Just to follow up. So on the Equipment Supply and Upkeep, you requested 375,000, and they recommended the mayor and also the Finance Board, 350. So can you just maybe give us a little background? Is that going to be okay for you in order to maintain the vehicles?
You can see it's a very challenging issue with vehicle repair in the city. We repair almost every vehicle from... I shouldn't say that. We don't repair fire, so police, senior center, Public Works, building. It's a challenge, and it continues to be a challenge. We're very aggressive with trying to maintain our equipment. We think it's the best, in the best interest of the city to do that. Previously, a lot of times, if towards the end of the year, if a vehicle went down, they put it on the hill, and then whoever used that vehicle really wasn't productive for the last month and a half. And we're trying to say that doesn't make a lot of sense. But I'm anticipating and hopeful that we will keep in that line item.
Does this account reflect any of the garbage trucks that are maintained?
That account does account for that, and yes, yes, it accounts for that. It's one of our bigger expenses. So hopefully, through the transition, when we did this original budget, this was done in October, November, and December before we really knew that we were going to and that you guys would approve the automated trucks. So it wasn't because of that, but looking at that, there will hopefully be some savings in regards to that because bringing on new trucks will hopefully reduce the amount of wear and tear. We have an older fleet. A number of these trucks are over 30 years old, actually.
Now, these new trucks, do they come with any type of maintenance agreement? Is there going to be significant savings in this account?
I can't look into the future, but I will tell you that there are warranties and maintenance agreements set into the contract that protect the city so that the trucks will be maintained through their warranty period, which I think is very important, which is a five-year period.
Thank you, Mr. Salee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Mr. Salee, capital outlays, again. You were cut 100,000 for fuel system. I'll just go through my questions, and maybe you can answer them. Fuel system, maybe what is that? Then you have tire-changing equipment. Is it old or whatever? $10,000 for that.
Come on. Alderman Vitale, are you not listening?
No, I'm listening. What?
He... Don't look at me like that.
Well, don't tell me like this.
That question was very, very... He entertained that question two, three aldermen ago. The fuel, the 100,000-dollar fuel he just asked.
The brake lathe? Did he say anything about the brake lathe?
Fuel, you're speaking of.
I've said all of these. What... The fuel system, okay. The tire-changing equipment, the brake lathe, Lath. Do you have any of those equipments, pieces of equipment?
If I can, I will explain. The fuel system was a system that is 27 years old, and it has a 30-year lifespan, and we want to plan to be proactive and try to replace it. It's going to go from being in the ground to being above ground, two 10,000-gallon tanks, for one for diesel, one for oil. That's that one. The lathe, again, the tire-changing equipment was one of the issues that the garage foreman, I go to every foreman and say, "Tell me what your wish list is," just like the mayor asks us, "What is your wish list?" And then he makes the decision with, working with us, and saying, "Okay, what can you do without this coming year?" And that's one of those items that, when I said to the foreman, I said, "Can you do without it?" And after, you know, the mayor asks, "Where can you see savings?" So that's where we took them out.
You have adequate equipment to change tires and to redo brakes and all of that stuff.
They're, again, Alderman Vitale, they're getting to the end of their useful life.
I understand that, but right now, it's satisfying.
Yes.
Any more questions pertaining to General Garage? Seeing none, we'll move on to account number 4431 Solid Waste, page 76. Any questions pertaining to Solid Waste? Alderman Grant.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Director Salee, a bunch of us had the opportunity to take and give a tour of the recycling plant, and we saw all the beneficial ways we can be able to take in to reduce collection and actually increase recycling. Part of the budget is about $2 million for city waste removal costs. Is there anything that we have planned that could take an increased recycling to reduce this even further?
Yes. We hope with the new automated trucks and going to a... We anticipate using a 64-gallon toter for trash. It will incentivize people to be more responsible in regards to separating recyclables from trash. Right now, we're at about 24% for recycling, and it's pretty much the industry. But there's a big upside, and as the tour taught us, there's a lot of things that are going into the recycling that maybe shouldn't, but there's also a lot of recycling going into trash. So we need to, and this is again getting back to my supervision, we've never audited our trash. We've never educated our staff. When I say our staff, our staff and our residents, what is the expectation? And it's a dirty job, literally, but you have to go and open up trash cans and cut open trash and say, "Okay, this is wrong," and then give an education piece to the residents. And that takes time. And it's not going to happen overnight, but our goal is through this reallocating of people to have people that will do that and do it well, we believe, and increase recycling. And as you saw, I mean, we pay about $92 a ton to get rid of our trash all in, between the tipping fees and everything else. And in our recycling, we get $20 a ton. So it's a huge transition on those two components. So anything that we do to improve would be a good thing. We're also in the process of updating a new letter, a new sticker that's going to go into the recycling. And part of it, I think, is just, I think we need to get into the schools, too. The kids are really our best resource. And we talked about it at Winter Brothers about somehow having some sort of bottle slash can drive that could be located logistically throughout the town, that, you know, maybe the schools could benefit from it, or maybe it's at the schools, but a container so people could drop bottles and cans off there.
Thank you. And definitely, I like all of the ideas. I was interested in the trash audit. Is there any kind of timeline of when we may be able to do something like this?
Our goal is, number one, to get the new transition of the automated trucks, and then when it frees up employees, it would be to allocate one or two of those employees to go out and do it. And I think the other thing is advertising in the paper. We've done that a little bit, and we've advertised in the radio, and I believe in television. I think our foreman was on television, Bill Plantomera. But it's a process. You know, the old adage on advertising, people have to see it 10 times before they really get it. And most people, I think, want to recycle. And the other component is, there's about 25% of yard waste that goes into our MSW, you know, municipal solid waste. So that's the other component, not just recycling that went to Winter Brothers, but the green waste. It's one of the things, if I can share with you, the Town of Bristol does something, and I didn't dream this up, it's by going and talking to people. The Town of Bristol has a template that they go out and they recycle green waste from residents. They charge $85 a year, and it's from April until October, and they give you a toter. And they do quite a bit, but they charge 85 bucks a year for that benefit. And then, once a week, people will go out, our staff will go out and pick up that trash. And I believe when we can reallocate some of these employees, we'll be able to do that with some of our vehicles. I think it'll be kind of cool. But then we need a place to recycle the items, and we're working on that also.
Thank you.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you. Through you again. I'm on the budgeted positions. You have a working leader that is now getting $49,962. I see that he is an employee now. You have him down. The mayor has him down, but the Board of Finance has removed him from the budget. Is this man still an employee with you?
So there was a position that was vacated about six months ago. That was the working leader that I discussed earlier. There was also another position of a laborer. So we went to the Board of Finance, obviously, before coming here, and we asked if they would reallocate those two positions into this new superintendent's position, and they agreed. So I believe that's what it is, yes.
Finally, thank you very much.
You got it.
Any more questions pertaining to Solid Waste? Alderman Genetazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Mr. Salee, can you, I guess, identify the laborer position? That's the one that's at the bottom that the Board of Finance did not fund? That's the second position?
It could be any of those laborer positions, but yes.
Okay.
I don't think it matters in the order, to be honest with you.
And that goes for the Waymaster, working leader? Is that... Can you explain that position?
Originally, and that might be a typo, I'm not 100% sure, but this is what happens, just so people understand, the aldermen understand this. If you're in a bargaining unit, you can't dictate to your coworkers. If you're a working leader, you can direct, okay? And our Waymaster down at the transfer station is not a working leader. We had two working leaders and then the Waymaster. So on a Saturday, if he was there with two other employees and he saw an issue that needed to be arised, and he couldn't get a hold of the foreman, technically, he couldn't tell that employee what to do. We contemplated having that, and I don't know, like I said, if it's a typo or how it happened, but that wasn't passed along. It shouldn't have been passed along because I think we believe now with our new contract that we'll eliminate some of these issues.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman. So that position is, doesn't exist, and it's not funded?
There's the Waymaster right underneath the foreman is that position. So I don't know how it got down there, but that was, that Waymaster, we were going to make it a Waymaster slash working leader. That was one of the discussions we had.
Right. I guess my point is, or I'm trying to understand, so the working leader, to Alderman Bevan's point, that you just said has retired recently, so you're not going to fill that position?
Exactly.
Okay. Then, getting back to the laborer position, is that the same scenario?
Yes.
There was a retirement, and you're not going to fill it?
In February, an employee retired, yes.
Okay. Now, the Waymaster, that's a whole different scenario. That's just...
He's employed, and he's still employed, and he'll probably be employed for a while. We try to give him another responsibility, I guess is the right word, in making him a Waymaster slash working leader.
Just to follow up. I'm just a little concerned because it's zeroed out. The mayor didn't recommend it, and the Finance Board didn't recommend it, but he is an employee, and moving forward, he will continue.
I think there was a typo in it. He's presently employed. He's going to be...
Mr. Chair, you asked about the Waymaster position, which if you look at the top of that chart, is a funded position, $53,000, $53,43 at the top. But if you look at the bottom, the Waymaster work, backslash working leader, that position has never existed. It wasn't recommended by the Board of Finance or the mayor's office. Again, that would have been a new position in what was initially contemplated. There was a BR3 filed that the position would be reclassified as a Waymaster working leader. One of the reasons why it wasn't recommended along is because between the time that the BR3 was filed at the department level back in October of 2015, a contract was adopted so that there could be sharing of services. And so the contract, the new contract achieves what the director had intended by changing the job description from a Waymaster to a Waymaster working leader position.
Thank you, Mayor Blake. Mr. Chairman, through you, to the Finance Director. Peter, can you... Is this position part of the position totals in our budget? This second Waymaster position?
Mr. Chairman, through you to the aldermen. No. That last position, Waymaster working leader at 26N, that back in October was originally requested by the department to add a working, add working leader duties to Waymaster position. It was submitted as if it was perhaps being contemplated as a new position, perhaps, you know, that there was some confusion there, maybe. I'll let Chris address that. But that's how it was originally submitted in October. And then, as the mayor said, with further discussions in December and with the contract negotiations, eventually, Chris's original intentions changed and were, had evolved into what you see proposed now. Thank you.
So if we were to vote on this, so to speak, tonight, it would not be that position, $46,523 would not be part of the total 1,539,938?
No. The way I see it, it's zeroed out by the Board of Fin... Zeroed out by the Board of Finance, zeroed out by the mayor, so it is not part of what's being recommended to the Board of Aldermen. It is not part of this budget.
So it shouldn't even be here?
It was... The only reason it was there is because that's how the department submitted it to my department through the form in October.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Anderson, you have your hand up? Any more questions pertaining to Solid Waste? Seeing none, we'll open under the account 4426 Wastewater, page 101 through 105. Alderman Anderson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Chris, it's my understanding that this is the year that we have some good news relative to nitrogen credits. Is that something you can provide us?
Yep, that is correct. Ed Kozlowski is the superintendent of wastewater. He took over the position approximately a little over a year ago on an acting basis, and just recently took it as a permanent basis. The year before Ed's starting of the position, the city paid between Husatonic and Beaverbrook, the two treatment plants we have, they paid $30,000 for nitrogen. So they had to pay into the account. This year, with Ed's guidance, we're anticipating, and I believe we've received a check for both plants of 153,000. So for a turn of 183,000 net to the city through Ed's leadership at the transfer state, I mean, at the wastewater treatment plants. And I got to say, it's not just been Ed, it's been a whole team effort. A lot of... Ed's a very proactive foreman, and I think the employees really enjoy working under him, and they've made a big difference. We have John Trapp down at Beaverbrook and Steve Gaudio at Husatonic that are helping Ed, along with our team that does all the sewer lines, repairs. And, you know, not to give you a sense of alarm, and I'm kind of, I know people probably say they want to just get home, but we do really do have a major issue with these wipes, and it's something that we just had a backup on a street, so...
Before you go into that in greater detail, I just want to say, I'm aware of the fact that when it came to seeking reimbursement, there was a great deal of due diligence required that Ed really had to spearhead to make certain that all the paperwork was together, that it was filed on a timely basis, that had been an issue in the past. And so he, kudos to him and his department that we're seeing that reimbursement.
Another example, Ed went after grant money. Part of the grant requirement was that you had a service agreement with a company that would calibrate your controls, and the calibration was about $15,000 a year. But because of that calibration in the agreement, we received about $85,000 in grants from the state that were sitting in an account waiting for us. That's one part of it, but it was one of the reasons the nitrogen credits went up so high because now that automation taught us, or let the plant run in a more efficient way, and we're expecting, or we're hoping that we're going to continue to have that progress in the year coming forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Alderman Baccarelli.
Yeah, hi, Chris. I'm happy to see the nitrogen credits. Several years ago, we were being fined over $300,000 in a brand-new facility down there, and I'm glad that we have things running properly now and we're making money. If I heard you correctly, maybe about $133,000 that we've gotten back... If I heard you correctly, maybe about $133,000, $133,000 that we've gotten back for doing a good job with our nitrogen credit. So, I'm real pleased to hear that, because as you can, you know, imagine, that over $300,000 in a budget that is, you know, where we squeeze every penny out of it, it's nice to see that we're getting money back. So, I'd like to compliment all those involved to bring in this forward to now we're in the black. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Alderman.
You got your hand up, Alderman Bevan? Go ahead.
Through you, please. State license stipend. You asked for $30,000, the mayor backed you up with $30,000. Do you know why the Board of Finance gave you an extra $13,000 to make it $43,000?
If, if, if I can be honest, and hopefully I always am, the wastewater is, as Alderman Vitale mentioned, it's a very specific job classification. You need a Class 4 to run the treatment plants, you need a Class 3 to be in operations. These stipends are to help offset what I believe is an underpayment of our staff in those departments. It was put in a number of years ago when the upgrades came in together, and you could no longer be a Class 3, you needed to be a Class 4. And in order to entice people to stay and also to come to the city, it made us comparable to some of the wages in our surrounding towns.
Thank you so much.
What line item was that?
That would be on page 101, line item 41129902, personal services.
Any more questions regarding wastewater? Alderman Genetazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Mr. Sayley, I would have to agree with Alderman Vecarelli on the nitrogen credits. I know we've come a long way, and I know that you have the right people in place, and I think you came before this board at one point, and we allocated some money for additional training to update the training down there. So, I think that's paid off tremendously, so I would like to comment on that. And also, at that point, you alluded to the fact that there was a possibility moving forward to gain some additional savings through that plant with electricity, and I just wanted to ask you, what does the future bring in regards to electricity?
We're meeting with a number of companies, and I don't want to bore you with the detail, but the most recent company, we're contemplating putting a fuel cell down there and using the methane. It's not actually a burning component, it's a separation component. It's a Class 1 renewable, which means we'll get an LREC for it, and I don't know if anyone understands the process, but what it is, is the state gives you money per kilowatt-hour as a credit. If you do it, it's a 15-year commitment. The mayor, the mayor actually was the catalyst to this. He got us introduced, and it's pretty exciting things. It's a Connecticut company up in Torrington, they employ about 600 employees. Bridgeport is one of the towns that have used a fuel cell. No one in the state has done a fuel cell with a methane component. So, we're in the process of getting, what we want to do is, we believe that we're going to do what they call virtual net metering, if this comes together, but there's other companies to do it, but virtual net metering, because it's a Class 1 renewable, and we'll be able to offset five of our biggest users by generating electricity down there, not just the treatment plants. So, it's pretty exciting things.
Thank you for the update. Thank you.
Any more questions regarding wastewater? Seeing none, we'll move on to the sewer commission. Any questions regarding sewer commission? Guess not. Thank you, Mr. Sayley, for all your definitions and answers, and giving us all the information we need to...
Thank you.
Thank you for the work you do for the city. Next account is number 4503, public debt service, page 78. If anybody have any questions pertaining to public debt service? Seeing none, we'll move on to account number 4710, employee benefits, page 84. Any board member have any questions pertaining to employee benefits? Seeing none, move on to account number 4720, insurance and bonds, page 85. Any board member have any questions regarding insurance and bonds? Alderman Grant.
Thank you. I answer this speed to the mayor. I was just curious about the workers' compensation, how it's a considerable jump from prior years, about doubled. Is there any information on that?
I'll let the Finance Director give you some additional details, but it's based on claims, it's based on the fact that the reserve fund associated with workers' comp had been eaten into a little bit. We have our actuaries that work with our insurance consultants that help us to establish the reserve funds that we'll need for the upcoming year. Based on the claims, they work with our risk manager, and we have been pretty good with workers' compensation claims within the last couple of years, but again, the recommendation with the actuaries and our insurance consultants and our risk manager was to increase to the 1.282 number.
Can I answer your question, Alderman Grant?
Yes, thank you.
Any more questions regarding insurance and bonds? Seeing none, we'll move on to account number 4740, claims and refunds. Any board member have any questions regarding claims and refunds? Seeing none, move on to account number 4790, benefit and salary reserve, page 106. Any board member have any questions regarding benefit and salary reserve? Seeing none, we'll move on to account number 4992, private school textbooks, page 92. Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through to the mayor. The private school textbook account has been at $20,000 for a few years, I would imagine, right? I think, if we go back.
It was established approximately 10 years ago, there was new legislation that allowed municipalities to create the account, and it has remained at $20,000 throughout that approximate 10-year period. At one point, we had three schools that were receiving this money, it was split between St. Anne's, St. Gabe's, St. Mary's. When, we were reduced from three to two schools, because St. Anne's closed, we retained the $20,000, because there was approximately the same number of students that went to the private schools that received this, plus the fact that there had been an increase. And it's my recommendation that you, again, even though there's the strong possibility that St. Gabe's may close, you'll likely have the same number. Again, I know there's forces working to try to save St. Gabe's, but, well, that's... My recommendation would be to keep the $20,000 as the number.
But the point would be that St. Gabe's is closing, and the fact is, next year's going to be one school, and so, to give $20,000 to the textbooks to the one school, I think, is a lot of money. When we divided it by three years ago, they got about six-plus thousand each, and now, the fact remains that we have one school next year in operation, so shouldn't we just proportionally reduce that to $7,000 or $8,000? Because our own textbooks and public schools are a little bit over that.
My recommendation, again, it's based on the number of students, there's been discussion that we had last night with our public school administrators, that said that they do not know yet how many St. Gabe's students, if any, will be trickled into the public schools. There may be significant numbers that go from St. Gabe's to St. Mary's. The fact that this number has not increased in the last 10 years is also another reason that I would say, hold this budget line item harmless.
I understand that, but per pupil expenditure, as we know, that this public school is paying about $19,000 per pupil expenditure, and it's 135 kids that were coming out of St. Gabe's that will be diffused and assimilated into the public school, or private school, or some other school, or St. Mary's, in their population there. So, if you look at per pupil expenditure for textbooks, that's a little high number. I would say that, you know, we should proportionally make the difference here, because again, as you said, you know, a little bit here and a little bit there makes a big difference in the end. So, you can save another $10,000, $15,000 there, that would be an extraordinary change or savings for the city. That's all I'm, you know, so I think we need to look at the idea of what the population of St. Mary's is, and what the textbook count are over there, because they're going to be reduced, and everybody's going to be going to St. Mary's. Public schools are going to be infiltrated by some of them anyway, and some are going to go to other private schools. So, I think we need to take a look at that. Thank you.
Any more questions under private school textbook? Seeing none, we'll move on to account number 4799, unallocated contingency, page 106. Any questions pertaining to unallocated contingency? Seeing none, we'll move on to account number 4993, education audit fees, page 93. Anyone have any questions pertaining to education audit fees? Seeing none, we'll move on to account number 4994, school debt, page 93. Anyone have any questions pertaining to school debt? Seeing none, we'll move on to account number 4994, employee benefits, non-teaching, page Anyone have any questions? Oh, Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the mayor, the Finance Director, can you just remind me what the non-teaching employees are, who, FICA, who, whose benefits this is covering?
It's a list of non-teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, et cetera, where their FICA's being charged to this, and also, the school nurses as well get charged to this account, and secretaries. There's a list, I can pull it if you'd like.
Any more questions regarding employee benefits, non-teaching? Seeing none, we'll open up on the last account, account number 4997, education slash health insurance contribution, page 94. Anyone have any questions regarding education health insurance contribution? Seeing none, is there a motion to recess to the next budget meeting, which will be May 11th?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll convene again, May 11th. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.